Anyways, so.
Well, Stuart. And a special thank you, a special thanks to Wendy for her generosity and making us a working dinner council meeting and our apologies to the people who aren't eating. It might be rude for us to say it's really weird, but we're gonna do it anyway. Alright, and moving on to the first item is the first item that we're going to not do. So, we're gonna do a recognition for bound up lobbying, but we have our segments class, and so we're going to do that in our next meeting, so.
Actually, we should recognize. So, like the thing.
Yeah, that's true, or it's deserving of two meetings. Craig was giving an overview of the hours. They made their mark on our meeting, for sure.
And so it can be so weird to see them leave.
Yeah.
Well, we feel that we're not several people who have been so much of this, whether they passed away or whether they.
We could give to them. I didn't work in my city.
That's the same.
Are we gonna do it next time for me?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll put something on.
Alright, well. I have a two right into our presentation. Deputy Dustin.
Well, City Council Mayor, we appreciate you letting us take maybe up to twenty minutes, maybe less. We'll see how we're going with this.
Joey's got a timer and a timer.
Yes.
He told us today that he enjoys a good taste.
Um, so I know in the past, a couple of City Council meetings, we've had the opportunity to talk about a committee that's over like neighborhood watch and emergency management and stuff like that. And myself and Kerry and Aaron Gilbert have spoken in looking at what other cities do. We're asking that the committee be dissolved and that we make a department out of it. And that that department has many legs to help feed for the emergency preparedness of the city of Woodland Hills. And so with that, Aaron Gilbert has put a PowerPoint presentation together that will kind of just briefly go over the sections of that emergency management program. There is Be Ready Utah, and it's kind of based a little bit after that. And then Neighborhood Watch is also a national thing. And so you'll see in this that this is an opportunity for, I think, is the community to come together and use resources that residents, skills and things like that, we can all work together with that, with the city, with law enforcement and residents. So, Aaron, I'm gonna turn the time over to you to do a presentation and we'll tie it in here. No kind of alternate.
You wanna be the one that gets the slides?
Joey, how do we get that?
Yeah, take time off.
Want to see me the slide pusher button?
I would, I'll be the.
While I'm setting up, I wanted to let you guys know a little bit more about me as I'm setting up. So I am a two-year resident here, live across the street, literally, of this facility. If you ever want to say hi.
I think you're in your own house.
I'm in the buddy, I'm in the old buddy's house. Really sounds weird. You do have buddies. I do have buddies, so I am in the buddy's. But I wanted to, let you know, I also own a company downtown in Spanish Fork that manufactures bulletproof products. And I'm always telling you to be prepared, and some of the things that I wanted to promote is that if I'm ever in a situation, say for example, a church, and there was ever an active shooter situation in there, I want to be that person that I want, I believe I would be, person who would want to protect those who are around me, particularly women and children, or my wife and my family. But being able to do that is kind of homeless, you have a shield. And so I know our city leaders here, you represent a lot of our people here in the city, and that you come under scrutiny and maybe you get insults and other things that happen to you, threats. So, on my way here tonight, I thought to myself, wouldn't it be cool if you guys all had a shield? So I'm gonna give you guys one, I'm gonna give you a position, one, not you personally, so the mayor's position and the councilman's position. I'm gonna give you a shield that you can carry in your backpack, that's why you brought that back, right? This will stop all handguns up to forty-four Magnum. It's very light, please listen. Such, did you get that?
Or your base or whatever else?
I got medium, I got large. You have this.
I'm like, there's one of that. Did you tell me?
Thank you, sir.
And also, he has gifted the Sheriff Department something for Deputy Dustin to use in our city, which is an armored vehicle. That he has linked to the Utah County Sheriff.
I didn't donate the vehicle, I donated the armor.
Yes, the armor is.
Armor protection in the vehicles, and so his vehicle now is gonna be able to stop forty-four Magnum all at first.
And he gets that as the liaison to our city.
He gets it because I like it.
Yes. We like it, yes.
So I talked to the sheriff, I said, I'm gonna donate this, but it's gonna go to this position here. And whatever else. So, I'm gonna flip it over here a little bit. So you guys can see. Alright, so go ahead and press left side.
We can skip that some more.
There, how's that? Alright, so this program is designed to help the city government, you guys, and the residents at the meeting as the back. On how we can prepare for any kind of crisis. The ultimate goal is to help us prepare our city with the hills and residents to become self-sufficient during a local, regional and/or national crisis. When I say self-sufficient, I mean, we're not depending upon the county to rescue us, we're not depending upon state to rescue us. We're depending upon ourselves as a community. You think, wow, that's a lot to ask, right? It is a lot to ask, but I can tell you, it doesn't, if we can think about it now and plan, it's something that can eventually happen where you can be self-sufficient. But, uh, but, uh, so.
And we can get you guys this slide deck.
Yeah, you'll get all slides, you can read after or once later on. But the benefits for the program for the residents as well as the city, and two things that I put here was that we want to help identify the skills that are within our community. We've got five hundred plus households here, we've got thousand plus resident adults that all have various different skills. During an emergency, it would be nice to know, how many doctors do we have? How many engineers do we have? How many nurses? How many paramedics? How many people who know about security, who have those resources or skills that we should know about? So we can talk to them and be more known as that. Also, the last one I put in there, Be Ready would be focused on raising funds to help our city acquire capital items that's necessary to help our city as a whole be prepared for. And I understand, you know, our tax dollars right now are pretty much maximized for expenses. So I'm looking at pulling in funds outside of our tax dollars to help fund some of these things. And I can talk more about that a little later. But before you have a couple of things. Does anyone know about what I told you about? You've donated a lot of stuff, what are you talking about? Down at the office. Everybody here, we talked about, things like that. You know, getting donated, we, you know, I'm not sure how much a million gallons of storage water costs. Those are resources that we can get access to, we can continue doing that, but wait, the next part. Leadership positions, so when both of you have a director, we have an assistant director who I like to call the segundo, is the mountain man, you always have a secondo. The secondo person is the person comes behind you and actually learns everything that the guy is running now. So he's basically training his replacement. Or replacement. Okay, so I need to have somebody there, because you can't depend upon one person. And that's why I don't want you to depend upon me or anybody else. So we're gonna have a way to train the replacements, and that's gonna be the system. We're gonna have captains, we'll talk about the captains a little later, and then we'll have fundraising director. Very poor position, and then also we have our law enforcement, city council liaison. For the next page. We talked about fundraising through fundraising efforts and also donations. We're not expecting the city to pay for any of this, whereas we basically would need access to certain city meeting rooms, various city employees' time to coordinate some of the preparedness ideas we have, access to potential city equipment such as backhoes, trailers, tractors, and possibly things that we donate to the city to help the city become prepared. So those are things that we can, we're not gonna be a line item hopefully on your expense bill, but we would be accessing certain resources. Okay, next one. We gotta develop a plan first, the plan's gonna be not only for our city, but we also need a plan for each family needs to plan their own emergency plan. And I mean, it's just a matter of training them on what they need to have in order to do their emergency plan. And the next one would be the city also planning theirs, the city's already got a plan.
Yeah, do you want me to say a little bit?
Please, tell us what you.
So, as some of you know, we're able to acquire funding from the county for emergency management on the county level, and we are doing a three-year pilot program that that money is being used for. Woodland Hills is one of the first recipients of that to make sure that our plan is in compliance with FEMA, et cetera, so that we have the ability to funding sources because they know we're prepared. The mayor and I and Aaron will be attending on the first, to the first pilot program meeting that kind of lays it out there, and we will be getting additional information, but that will be of no cost to us, and we'll be able to implement the plan then for this department. And then, and then what we're talking about in Be Ready and Neighborhood Watch then would be part of the extension of our overall plan.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. Speeding along. One of the things that the city does not have right now is sufficient storage space for storing, someone said that I'm talking about try and collect emergency medical supplies and emergency food supplies, stuff that will be utilized here in our residents. So, one of these I'm looking at is a donation for eight thousand square foot building, such as that one. And so look like it's like. Where is that located? Arrowhead Trail Road across from IFA, and it's actually built behind the building with the resorts.
Right, okay.
So that whole project, my office, I have fifty thousand square feet in that building, it's two hundred and fifty thousand square foot facility. Being two foot by ninety thousand, you know, water change to come out of that property. And then also this building in the back, we're gonna go on to that product, that project next. So the current owners of this facility is the mayor of Mapleton, and he's very sympathetic to small cities and our struggling capitalization and funding costs. So, fortunately, his company's gonna make a killing while he's in this, and Billy and Big Subdivisionary.
Yeah, they actually wanted to bring the housing division there, and so that's why they're going to tear down all the buildings in that area. And so this would just go to the crap if we don't use that.
Maybe, he could probably sell the building, but because we're a nonprofit government entity, he's more leaning towards us. So, the city's coach without the, I can continue those discussions. But the idea is this would be used for half for storing city facilities of vehicles, which I talked to the Corbett about the fact that we have requirements to store a lot of our city vehicles under roof structure or. So this building could double for that purpose, as well as have the other half be used for storing emergency supplies, supports. So if I understand you correctly, the building, we would need to provide the property and maybe the foundation and the tear it down and move it. Okay. If, if we wanted it. And so we're working on putting together the budget for that, by the way, so we can present that to the city. Thanks. Alright, so Be Ready, I'm proposing, well, we are proposing multiple different portions of it. The first one talks about shelter, so Be Ready would be helping our residents figure out how can they make their shelter safer during a disaster, and we've got ideas and there's stuff that the state level has that be ready, that we need to share with all our residents, and we'll be focused on that. Water, none of the people surviving a disaster, we have some storage right now, but if our pump went down, if our power outage went out, if the fuel for the pumps went, you know, dried up, we still have good fuel up, what you gonna do for water at your house? Because if you don't have water, you're basically, you're out of here. You gotta find somewhere else to go there, because it's too difficult to live without water. Food, basically, the idea there is not only to have emergency food supplies in our facility, but also to teach our families in the community about how to become self-sufficient themselves, helping them be able to figure out how can they grow enough food bills for themselves and their family. And so, again, education, these are a lot of these are educational components of what we want to present. Security, security for the city and security for the individual homes, how you can balance prepare for security in those areas. Now, in the, Officer Dustin, do you want to tell us about, that's gonna be the city program we're gonna.
So that would be the Neighborhood Watch that we've talked about before, and we'll have residents that join that and help out. Yeah, and lots of training.
So there'll be, like you said, there'll be a captain assigning each one of these topics. So there'll be a captain that will assign to the security or the.
Neighborhood watch.
Neighborhood watch, I wanna say it looks just fine, but. Okay, Neighborhood watch. So we're gonna follow that program the way the city can, the way the Sheriff's Department has it. Medical, well, we don't have medical facilities here in the city, right? But, yeah, we're working towards the idea of becoming self-sufficient, that means we should probably look at having emergency medical supplies. Here, okay. Communications, we'll talk more about the communications a little bit later on, but basically, the idea of, you know, to communicate without the use of cell phone towers or ham radios, they're more power, how do we communicate? Smoke signals, so we'll talk about that later. Power, backup systems, and sanitation, just case, your services. Those are the departments, programs we're talking about, my, the rest of the slides are going in a little more detail, you can read on your, on your own leisure. What was I, like?
We were at sixteen minutes.
Okay, so. If you just look through the other pages, you'll see.
Water.
Water.
Send it to us.
Yeah, you'll be able to read these later on. Okay? Okay, questions and answers?
I like it, I think. I think the community would appreciate us having a preparedness, you know, plan and something for them, because I'm sure time is a little bit, I mean, what are you hearing about in the news right now, right? The threat of nuclear war or war.
There's not one thing, it's another.
Yeah, it's constant.
We're doing very quickly.
And also, just to recognize where are our partners, right, and a whole community response. We have our residents, we have us as elected officials, we have our staff, we have the Sheriff's Department, the hospital, if there's something here, then the hospitals would be part of our whole community response. So recognizing who all of those partners are and what we, how we interact with each other. That's one of the things that the county will be doing as we, as we implement our plan and we build our plan over the next few weeks or months that we are working with the county on this. Those are trained, professional emergency plan writers, you know, they have the resources, they have the know-how, they know exactly what we need to do to be in compliance with state and federal statutes to receive funding in a disaster. In addition, I think that it's important to recognize that we have other partners. I've already reached out to our main ecclesiastical leader in the area, and he's president, they're our favorite, and he and I have had several conversations about how we might partner with existing programs that they have, such as this community service and stuff. So we will coordinate, because as by law, local jurisdiction is in place, and how do we help our partners recognize what their role is? And, and of course, we have our EMS and our fire, which has distinct roles that are happening and kicking in during emergency. So this is really a whole community response.
Well, so. I learned one great form thing with the fires. And it was kind of an interesting thing in contrast to Elk Ridge. So Elk Ridge had, what was the name of that program?
CERT.
The CERT program in place. But we really, and Woodland Hills didn't. And what I learned was we were actually better able to handle that condition because CERT is really designed around more of a, an emergency like an earthquake or a complete disaster, where you're not really moving your people, your people, you're really needing to go and do like search and rescue in individual homes and that kind of thing. The other thing is CERT is a very top-down organization, so they have their CERT commanders.
Right.
And then the commander establishes a command base, and then they basically dictate, okay, you go search this area, you go search this area. So because it was very top-down, just happened that their CERT commander was out of town on the weekend, when the fire hit.
That'll always happen.
And so, because of that, they went, hopefully, two days before the most critical two days without any guidance in any direction. Whereas with, with Woodland Hills, because we didn't have that organization in place, we kind of were, for lack of a better way of putting it, making it up as we went, but that actually turned out to be a better response than the CERT response and depending on certain, because we were able to, I mean, city officials, we were in communication with each other, but we were able to then establish two different headquarters, one down at the high school, one here. And it was, like I said, it just actually worked out much, much better. So, it's, it's interesting, talking, oh, one other thing I wanted to mention is the, uh, I wanna just, you know, so there might be some discomfort in some communities over utilizing our, the local congregations. But I will also say that that made a world of difference during the fires because the, initially, you're right, the city was primarily the one that was responding and more than keeping people out, right? That was the whole of the city was to implement the mandatory evacuation. Once that was in place, though, the ecclesiastical groups came in and made sure everyone had housing, made sure that everyone had food, and all that was taken care of. And it really freed us as city officials up from having to do that part. Interestingly enough, it also freed up the Red Cross, they didn't have to do any of that at all. And, and instead, we could focus more on the logistics of fighting the fire, securing the city, that kind of thing. So, anyway, all these partners are extremely important.
So, so one of the things that I've actually started working on is a program called HICAN. It's the independent, it's the independent community communication access network. This is a program that I'm developing with the, with the Premier Young University, their computer science division, and actually, I'm already about a month into it. We'll have the first prototype program done before the end of the semester. But this program is, it'll allow a group, whether it's a small city or a UZAS group, be able to communicate with each other, okay, the cell towers all go down? And if the power grid goes down, how can we communicate with our, our leadership team? And then also with key members of our community to be able to get messages out to everybody? And so this program is utilizing technology, like, or even not using cell phone, but combines it with a little antenna about eight big Bluetooth connects to it. And this little antenna can communicate eight miles away. So it's a mini cell tower program. It's not very expensive. And it's a program that can get charitable donations and fundraising, we can put these in the hands of key members of our society, of our community, who can make sure that messages from the city council get distributed as quickly as possible, if there's a grid down situation or power grid. I mean, cell towers, your typical cell towers are only having a day's worth of fuel with generators. So unless they're constantly topped off, we will lose the cell towers. But we have to have a plan in action that will be available, and, you know, can we use ham radios? Yes, those are more complicated ones for you to use. I wanna stick with the technology that everybody can say is yourself. Can we use walkie-talkies? Actually, no, we can't reach the whole city, because the, to change in geography. These little antennas are what's called a mesh network, they can actually piggyback the cell here from antenna to antenna to antenna to get this, and this. It doesn't need last, I think. Much, this, same technology the US military uses when we go into a location. There's no cell tower, we actually build, they take their own cell tower systems over, and that's what I'm proposing to be used to. So, that is one of the things that I'll be adding to communication portion of be prepared for our city leadership, to key members of our society, of our community.
But we're really, really excited about this emergency management department, and we hope that I will be on the agenda for a vote next, next meeting to establish that. And then the two sections of those, again, would be Be Ready Woodland Hills and the Neighborhood Watch for Woodland Hills, and those would be the two aspects. And then we will build it out as we first get our, our, our plan in place with the county, and then we'll just slowly build and keep giving updates on everything that's happening and approval for what we're going to do next. But this is kind of that summary of, of thought process, some of it will be visionary that we might not be able to do right away, but we want to get to a place where Woodland Hills feels our residents feel secure. We can feel secure because we're not gonna be in here forever, and it would be nice to be able to hand stuff off to the next set of leaders to say, Woodland Hills really is prepared, I mean, it's twenty-five years that we've been at our fire department, and when it was first started, it was one of those things that we were all, all of us who lived here before that, it was just like, kind of like, well, when the state was coming, it was coming, right? And once it was established, now our residents couldn't imagine us not having a fire department of the quality that we have. And I think that's the same with this emergency management in, in being ready for whatever comes our way.
So, do other cities have something like this?
Or Be Ready program, there are, but not maybe to the extent of what my vision of it is. I'm the kind of person, you can ask Corbett, that looks at, what's the worst-case scenario situation in the other city? And that might be a nationwide power outage. And there's multiple threats to that power, our target, which a lot of us have seen here, didn't understand, thinking that's not really legit thing, but there are people in our government that are actually very scared of it. So if we can plan for that kind of events, a long-term power outage, survive on ourself, ourself as a group. And I could do it myself, but I'm not gonna be leaving the city to do it by myself, I don't wanna do it by myself, I wanna do it with my neighbors. I wanna help my neighbors get as prepared as I am, so that we can, as a group, then, we can stay on our feet, then we can help others outside our, outside our city, but we can't do it, we can't even take care of ourselves.
And, and just to reiterate what we said, communication is good. The Community Watch program is a nationwide program, right, it has kind of a framework. The same as Be Ready Utah, it's under the Department of Emergency Management for the state, it's one of their arms, and they have Be Ready for Communities, Be Ready for Families, Be Ready for Business, they have several different parts of Be Ready, and so we kind of fashion this act in that school, like, new state program, and we can use parts with them for state resources as well.
Let's just tweak it a little bit.
Yeah, well, I applaud you for your vision, I think, but it's awesome, thank you, it makes me very tired and that.
Well, where does Joey go?
Alright, does anybody have any comments?
The reasons that I said back then was, going to a department lets us have initial funding, schools, grants, there's some national and state grants that are for, we see that in different departments, that we don't qualify for right now. And some cities are getting thousands of dollars, and so I think that we qualify with this new threat. I'm gonna just go get this. I'm gonna just go get this.
I think in the short run, maybe it would be good like to put out there that if there was something for people to come meet here or congregate here to kind of find out what's going on, like if something happened next week, right? And we're not, so that'd be nice to maybe.
Right now, that's all we would have to, we would have to do it that way.
Mm-hmm.
So we don't have a communication system that will survive a power outage or an EMP attack or any of those major disasters, which, again, on worst case scenario, yeah, so. Anything less than that's gonna be easy for us to survive.
Well, I would assume that this is also something that can be rolled out in phases, right? So
It will be.
Because some of this is pretty ambitious.
It is. It would be rolled out in phases. Uh, but we do only have a small window of opportunity to take advantage of some of the, um, stuff we can get donated to the city. Uh, because if we don't, uh, take advantage of it before somebody else does, it could end up in Elk Ridge instead of here.
Yeah. Well, as much as we love our neighbor to be selfish.
Yeah.
Southwest, I, I grew up in, Salt Lake County, mountains are almost to the east, so, yeah.
And the other thing is when we, Mayor, when we meet on Tuesday, as we're there at the county meetings, if we have additional internal questions, we can talk with, um, with Sergeant Quittner about that and, and what we're, well, Lieutenant, he's Lieutenant now, I forgot. Lieutenant Quittner about who is the EM for the county and we can ask him additional questions on how our plan will fit into this. I talked to him quite extensively that we were giving this presentation today. And he was very excited that we're being proactive.
Great. All right, well, thanks to all who, uh, participated and, uh, with no further comments, move on. Thanks again, Aaron.
And thanks for the gift.
Yeah.
Well, no, you never need it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Card, like a card, it was this.
Yes, I do.
I need one.
He's got some cool stuff for you. He's got pictures. So it's a picture frame and it can stop what?
Three oh eight, seven sixty by fifty ones, uh, hunting rifles, thirty odd sizes.
And it's beautiful.
Picture on your wall, you're awesome.
Grab it.
A little bit smaller than that, but I can put whatever picture on it you want. And if there's ever a, an active shooter with a rifle.
He can hold in front of you.
It'll, it'll stop multiple rifle rounds. Probably at least dozens, maybe.
Why for me? Why did you say?
For your office.
You have a rest app, he's a reporter.
Well, your type, are you doing great to put in your, in your office at work or?
Yeah.
I'm invested in your safety, okay? I'm gonna link mine up right here now.
But, yeah.
Stop, yeah.
I know. I got one right here.
All right, letter three. This will be stuff. Retraction of the Community Watch Committee policy and procedures. Guys writing with what Aaron just presented. Any further discussion on that?
I don't think so.
And again, we're retracting that. It's on the vote for tonight and the next council meeting will be the vote for establishing the emergency management department.
All right. Discussion item number four. Uh, Sheriff's, again, contract, yep, back up here, please.
Come on back.
Yeah.
You may want one of these.
Why?
You're already going through.
Oh, I thought I saw you saying.
No, I, I was just going to ask, what is, and you're probably gonna tell us, when is this contract wrapped? From when do I?
Uh, your July first to July first, so.
So it's the same contract, right? That we are assigned, this must be essentially an addendum to that.
So I'm gonna read something from the sheriff's office just to kind of help better understand this. So this is from the sheriff's office regarding uh, a sergeant position and the contract. So it just says, and this goes to all the small contract cities that we work with, so. So Mayor and the, uh, city council members. The sheriff's office has partnered with you for many years for law enforcement needs and is grateful for the opportunity to serve your communities. The current deputy assigned to the small contract cities has served in the position since July of twenty twenty-one. Since that time, he's gotten to know your city residents and employees. In doing so, many of the great residents have asked the deputy how long he would, uh, be with them. This is a question and concern among the small contract cities. Because sheriff deputies are not assigned to a specific assignment for a set period of time, there has been more turnover in small contract city assignments than the sheriff's office and the city towns would like. One of the aspects that makes the sheriff's office successful is the amount of variety of opportunities and advancements for the deputies. While this creates a great work environment for the deputies, the sheriff's office understands the value and the importance of consistency and commitment to the specialty assignments. We also understand the desire from you and your residents to have those assigned to your cities to stay in that position longer. In addressing this concern, the sheriff's office proposes upgrading the current deputy position to a sergeant position. The sergeant, the, the sheriff's office believes that this would benefit the city, the residents and the sheriff's office as a whole. The city would still get the same law enforcement service plus the benefits of having a sergeant. The benefits of having a sergeant, we, I put three bullet points here. The first one is sergeant has higher authority than a deputy and will be able to make decisions that will benefit the city. Second one, the sergeant generally stays in their assignment for a longer period of time, and usually that's three plus years. Allowing the sergeant to be more involved in the community by getting to know the citizens, the issues in the community. And this would provide a familiar face and a point of contact for questions. It would provide the opportunity to build a long-term relationship. Another benefit, the sergeant would serve as an advocate between the cities and the sheriff's office. The city, uh, currently funds a deputy position of seventy-five dollars an hour. That rate, the rate to fund a sergeant position would, would raise to eighty-three an hour. This change in the current, uh, contract price would result in a total yearly increase for Woodland Hills of ten thousand four hundred dollars. Um, if we move forward with this, the city of Woodland Hills, if you're interested in it, we'd need a letter from the mayor in response of, just stating pretty much you're interested in moving forward with the change from a current deputy position to a sergeant position. And so I have some numbers. I will give you a copy of this letter too. But just so you, you realize right now, uh, Woodland Hills pays for twenty-five hours a week. That's, uh, at seventy-five dollars an hour. That is ninety-seven thousand five hundred. That is thirteen or one thousand three hundred hours a year. The, uh, the other cities, you'll see, realize their, their hours is, one is five hours, the other is six hours and the other is seven hours a week. So you guys, I spend about fifty-eight percent of my time here in the, or with Woodland Hills. Out of my, uh,
We're gonna still move here.
Move here, okay, so.
Ben can give you a deal.
So what, what's up with you? Ben doesn't even look up.
Either that or we can ask Chris to give him a little apartment.
Can you use the pool?
There you go. So with that, I also ran some other numbers just so you're aware. Um, and some may frown on this, but if you did drop one hour per week and dropped it down to twenty-four hours a week, that would give you one thousand two hundred and forty-eight hours a year. Um, it'd be a difference, you'd minus fifty-two hours in that year because of the fifty, uh, two weeks. Um, it would, instead of ten thousand four hundred dollars increase, it would be a six thousand eighty-four dollar increase.
Yeah, but you can, I, I don't wanna interrupt, but can, what would that look like in terms of, I mean, as a practical matter, what would a slight reduction in hours?
Well, and, and that would, and it would be me, that you would see me one hour less per week.
Right.
Or just myself being in the city. Um, you still get that twenty-four hour coverage. So when I'm not on, deputies will still respond. Um, but you just, I would just be one hour less.
And you and I talked a little bit about this. I, I think that your familiarity with the city actually could very meaningfully mean that you could do more with less time, even if, so if we were to scale back and keep the cost down.
Yes.
I don't wanna disrupt your.
Nope, nope, that's good.
But I did wanna make that point.
So. Um, so that's, I, I just looked at that, just adjusting the hours. I know that, uh, um, cost is, is a big thing here. And so I just wanted to look at that and see. Um, it, if it is funded or it funded and, and to proceed forward, we're looking at starting, uh, starting the position in January of twenty twenty-three. That means from January to the end of June, it would be prorated. Um, and I looked at some numbers, I, I ran some rough numbers, but that would pretty much from January to the end of June would be like seventy-nine dollars instead of eighty-three. And then start in July first of twenty twenty-three, that would bump up to the eighty-three dollars an hour. So.
And, and your term of three years would start in January?
Yes.
Oh, really?
I thought it was three to five years.
It is.
Okay, let's do, let's take the deal.
I thought it was three to ten years.
Yeah.
Three to ten years.
Let's make it to five. Run up this negotiator in the morning.
So there is, but there is also that annual four percent increase that comes with the contract and that would also start in July. Um, but I'm, I'm trying to wheel and deal here with the sheriff's office and the, the county itself to see if maybe, um, if that position starts at July first because of that increase already, that we hold off on that four percent until July of twenty twenty-four.
That would be great.
I'm gonna go talk to him. I'm, see what can work somehow.
So is, who, who makes that determination? Is it the, the county, county like commissioners or is it, is it the sheriff himself?
So the county commissioners would have to sign off on it, um, and probably the, the auditor, financial department, so.
I just wanna go to lobby.
So, I, I, we can look at that. It's just something I just thought about, so.
I'm gonna write that down.
Um, I'm, so what I'll do is I'll leave the letter and then also just some numbers and hopefully that's, those numbers are correct. I've gone back and forth on those. But mainly what I'm looking for tonight is not a vote to say, yeah, we'll do, let's do the contract, but a vote to this, or to kind of see where you guys sit as a city. Are you interested in moving forward? If you are, then I will start the process with working with the county attorney's office and the commissioners and the sheriff's office and starting rewriting that contract. And mainly in that contract is gonna change the word deputy to sergeant and your hourly rate. And then it'll also talk about just that, that prorate, um, period of time.
It's just July, it starts in July, right? So it'd be due.
So, uh, January first.
Oh, January. Yeah, okay.
Contract is to July.
But we're saying that we're gonna request from the commission that they, they hold off on the four percent increase until twenty twenty-four.
That's what, and I just thought about that tonight, so I haven't even talked to any of my administration about that. But.
But we, uh, I'm just thinking i- in terms of, we could keep costs exactly as they are and just in exchange for a fewer hours. I mean, to me, that, that would be.
Yeah, so your, your increase would be, instead of, uh, going to, if you did the ten thousand four hundred, it would, your yearly cost would be a hundred and seven a thousand nine hundred. If you went to, if we dropped one hour off of the contract, it would be an increase of six thousand eighty-four, which would be a total of a hundred and three.
And you can then allocate those hours to the other communities that you serve, right? I mean, it's not as though
Yep.
you need us to take all those hours. I, I just turn that out as an option, just because, you know, if we don't have the money, there still is a way for us to keep you.
Correct. And then the total cost on that is eighteen thousand for a sergeant position, which the other cities also would see an increase in their budget. So I don't know what your feelings are on that and I don't know how.
Can I express some? Ladies, I, I would consider Chief James and say, I'm a personal friend. I, I've spent a lot of time talking to him about their police services. And, uh, he frankly just shuts me down. He won't even talk about it. So I say that, I, and I don't mean for Sergeant Dudson to hear this, but we don't have a lot of choices in where we live for good police service, just being honest. Just they will not take us. Salem has so much growth and he's just, he's covered in
They don't have resources.
Their own problems and they don't want to get there. So anyway, they're full of, so. So the fact that we have, I believe, really good service from Utah County Sheriff's Office. And, and I'll, I'll also add to that feeling that I haven't seen any citizens that have asked for fewer hours. They are not thinking that way. You know, some people want more. And so I'm, I'm terrified of losing another half hour. You know, they just, they just want a covered
Well, if we give it up, we give it back.
I agree. The, the hard part is January.
Yeah.
If it were June, no big deal. Well, I shouldn't say no big deal, but we then make a
You can change the budget.
Change the budget. But January, changing the budget is.
That's true.
So if we knock it down by one hour, just for those first six months, then that would probably be okay.
But can we get the time back though, once we give it away?
Yeah, once we, can we, can we bring it back in July?
So.
Probably not.
I don't see an issue if we wanted to push it to July first. I don't see an issue with that. If we wanted to say we're gonna move forward with this, that gets the ball rolling and we set that date as July first to begin it.
Yeah, it's just, it's a, it's a budget.
It's just a timing.
Good point.
Day, yeah. For me, it changes.
I mean, I'll still be here, I think.
See, that's the, that's my only concern, is that I think.
That could change.
Is, right now, we've got a contract that revolves our deputy every, how many years? Zero to three?
Uh, four years.
Every four years.
Some of them are faster than that.
Yeah, cuz I, I believe we've had four since I've lived in the city and I haven't been here for twelve years. Well, but. So my concern, my concern is, is if we get a, pardon my frankness, a dud of a deputy, right? It's kind of nice having them cycle through a little quicker. So I'd love to go sergeant.
I see what he's saying.
If we can push the sheriff that our sergeant's last name is Dudson, then I'm full steam ahead on this. I love it. I think it's exactly what we should do. But if he's gonna steal our deputy and we get somebody else, then we're kind of rolling the dice. Then we might get stuck with somebody who loves one of the other cities more than, you know, Deputy Dudson loves us. Yeah, but any employer knows you you're only rolling the dice. I mean, I think two other deputies actually went to other jurisdictions. They, they left the county and went to their
They got promotions.
Well, there was one promotion, but there were two others that just went to other jurisdictions, so.
And that's, and, and, so you know, so, I mean, I, with the small contract cities, all I've pretty much heard and that was the first week mainly was, how long are you gonna stay here? And so I, I, I brought that concern to the sheriff's office and just said, it's the consistency and the commitment. These cities need someone that can be their point of contact and not just for a couple of months or a couple of weeks. So I was looking at it, you've had five deputies over the Woodland Hills in the last fi- uh, four years.
Yeah.
So that's, that's quite a few. Um, so in talking to the sheriff's office and that, that's, um, that is the concern. And I, I see it with the cities and I see it with the sheriff's office. And then, um, I think with the letter from each city, and that's what I'm gonna try and get, is a letter just saying they wanna move forward with that. Um, I think the sheriff's office looks at that and if that's what they wanna do and they wanna put me in that position, then I think I'm safe for the next six months or seven, eight.
So we are lobbying the county commission and the sheriff?
It would be sheriff.
Yeah. Well, the county commission to approve the contract.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta, uh, let me make some conversation on that one.
Yeah.
But I, I think that would, if they would be willing to do that, I think that, that will help all the contract cities.
Well, we have a new commissioner coming on in January, so.
Yeah.
I had one of them last week.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think, I, I like the idea. Um, I think it's a good move. You know, the most expensive part of any human resource in any industry is, is turnover. Cuz you've got about a six-month training timeframe before you even get an R O A. And with us, you know, going through so many, you know, I've never felt a connection to our deputy. Now, obviously, our relation, my relationship has changed. But I've never felt that like I have Deputy Dudson in being invested in our city and knowing all the little places in our city that need special attention. And that learning curve, I think, is, is valuable. And expensive when we have to redo it over and over.
So, thanks. And, and so just to recap then, so what you need from us then is you would need kind of a, an L O I, a letter of intent? That we wanna pursue this and that, uh, you know, we have high level interest. And, and when would you need that by?
Probably as soon as possible. Um, and then you could put in there, I mean, if you wanna start July. And then you could put in there, I mean, if you want to start July first of twenty twenty-three, put that as a prospective date that you'd like to shoot for.
And then to Ben's other point, some assurances that we would get you and not Barney Fife?
Wait a minute.
Barney Fife. You might better help me with the letter.
I, I've been asked if I, if I'd been Barney Fife.
Be a great.
I, I've been asked multiple times, I thought I called the police.
And you got it in your pocket? All right, well, I, I'm just looking, you know, if we can have some assurances that, cause if we're gonna make this added investment.
So I can't.
It's in you, frankly, definitely.
Say, yes, put me down, that's something you're gonna have to say yourself.
Yes, we could request him, right?
Yeah.
We can put that in our letter of intent.
Yeah.
We'd like to request to him.
But, but when we finally sign that addendum to the contract, it would be locked in with you presently, right? I mean, we can do the letter of intent, cause what, what I don't wanna do is I don't wanna sign an agreement that locks us into ten thousand more a year and then we lose you. Because then it's the whole exercise.
And knowing Sheriff Smith, I don't think he's gonna let that happen.
But do you think that he would contractually agree to it? Like, can we lock you in?
That would be perfect.
There's no doubt in life. Let's ask him.
That's something I think in the letters from the mayors would have to put and then that's probably a high consideration.
Okay.
So.
All right, thank you.
I'm just gonna, why, I'm done.
He did tell me that the future replacement would also be a sergeant level person.
Yeah.
So that means so.
Right, for sure.
So that's good.
And that would be something that obviously the sheriff's office would really be considered of who takes that place.
Yeah.
So it's gonna work on this area.
Or we could kidnap our deputy.
Could we just like handcuff you to your door?
Yeah.
We talked about this already.
Are you feeling the love there?
We, we have a basically.
I should just move you to Woodland Hills.
It's repacked by handcuffs.
I'm just, I'm just concerned of the semi-flying line you're rolling away, okay?
And that's something that can give you, give you a lot at a much less price. That's all good.
Ben's like, don't make any promises for me.
Well, we really do appreciate it. Thank you. It's a real asset to our city, so.
I appreciate you guys and I, I really do enjoy working in the cities and being a part of it.
We have a house for you. It's for sale.
Yes, we have this really great house.
Just so you know, that increase, I'm not even seeing very much of that, so.
All right, item five. Wayne, planning commission update and proposals.
Uh, we're in the process of updating a couple of ordinances. First one is to get rid of roosters in the city. We've gotten a number of complaints and it's really hard to manage. And so we always, already have prohibitions against male goats and swine. So it's not like we're, we're cutting new ground here with things, so.
Why male goats?
Male goats are more aggressive than female goats. And so that's the reason male goats were listed long time ago. They'll jump on cars and things like that, so.
And this was also part of the original WOOPA standards.
Yeah, but no roosters and all that was WOOPA.
Yeah, it was part of it that we now.
Cause before I moved here, I read the CCNRs, cause I'm weird like that.
And some, Ben, do you guy, do you prohibit roosters in your association, do you know?
They don't allow any chickens.
Yeah, I don't, just cats and dogs.
Okay, so some, some CCNRs have that already with them, so. Anyway, that, we, the planning commission voted on that and we're unanimous on recommending to you all to add that to our prohibited list of, of animals.
So really all we're adding there is just roosters?
Yep, yes.
And not that I'm looking to stir the pot, but how many residents would you figure this will impact that might have?
We've got two residents that seem to be consistently have rooster problems. Probably some neighbors tolerate it. No, there's three, I'll stand corrected.
I don't have any, it has surprise roosters, they're home.
Some of them start at four o'clock in the morning, you know, and so I don't think it's a large population there, but it's.
But we do have an increase of people who have backyard chickens and, you know, those mistakes can happen and and it'd be, well, obviously no one cares, we said anything, well, they do care. And I think it's just important that we just say.
I didn't want to give anyone the opportunity to complain. So there's the chicken man in case and you can call him if you want to. Chickens are roosters to the chicken man and he'll take them.
Well, one of, one of our residents I know has a little small farm in Palmyra and he has chickens there, so he, he moves them back and forth between here and there. So it won't be any big deal for him, he just can't bring them into the city anymore and will have to keep them there. So I don't see it really as a big imposition on people with prohibiting that way. The second issue is that we're, we're refining our site plan. And there'll be more forthcoming, we'll be coming back to you with some other proposals to align it more with the state code. But we have had our site plan that we've required at one in a scale of one inch to thirty feet. And that's, that's large, a little bit larger than, that is helpful to us. So we're suggesting a one inch equal twenty feet as site plans are drawn for us to look at and review. And we're getting those a lot now in that one inch equals twenty feet. A few diehards won't give it up and so they're, they said, hey, that's your code, thirty feet, so that's what we're gonna do. So that's one change with the scale of a site plan. Another is shows item four on, on your, in your packet there of this ordinance. A location sketch drawn to scale. We haven't required that scale for a long time, so just a location sketch. And so rather than fight something that, that is not being done, we're suggesting that drawn to scale be removed from that. It's just a location sketch, just a where the lot happens to be. So that's what we're proposing there. Our contour intervals have, our, our code says five feet. And that's just a little bit too great a distance, so we're looking to two feet to, to scale that down. And again, already many of them are doing that just by, cause it's easier for them as well.
They use eight two feet, so I don't know how that range.
I don't, I don't know either. So anyway, we're recommending that two feet intervals for contour lines be, that the five foot be changed to two feet. And the two other items, some time ago, we changed our city ordinance for fire flow purposes. And we're requiring a one and a half inch line now instead of a one inch line. And so our code already says one and a half inch. So we're asking that that be included on the site plan so that we know that they know it's one and a half inch line now. It's no longer a one inch line.
Are you talking the water line from the city to the house?
Correct. So that change and we ask that that be included on the site plan so that we know that they understand that that's what it's supposed to be. And the last item we're suggesting for, proposing for change is that a note be included on the, on the site plan. And interestingly enough, this, this, the state code allows this particular note, which says all construction will be in accordance with, in our case, Woodland Hills city ordinances and development, development and construction standards. So it's kind of a catchall provision, just to, we're comfortable and they know that they've got to comply with all our city ordinance. And it's written there on a stamped site plan, so there's, it's, it's clear that they have to comply with our ordinance. So those are the suggested changes that we're making to the, to the site plan to add those into the site plan process.
Can I ask a question? I should know this, but who is it that does the inspection against the site plan onsite?
The whole site plan really is not inspected onsite, portions of it are. Portions of it are self, self-done, but we, for example, the, the grading of a lot is, is looked at by our, by Corbett or, or Craig when they go out and do inspections. And it's not, it's follow-up to make sure that they, they're doing what they're said they will do on the site plan.
Yeah, I guess I, I'm just asking this question, so I'm thinking, okay, if you've got the, on the site plan, you've got a mark that you have to have a one and a half inch line. Who's actually looking in the trench and saying that's a one and a half inch line?
Sunrise.
So Sunrise does that?
On that, on that particular item, Sunrise does the water lateral inspection.
Okay.
And they verify that it's eight two now.
Okay.
So it just depends on what it is.
We've had, at least recently, there was one instance where they had a change. They did a one inch and they had to change it to a one and a half inch, so they got it wrong. But anyway, that, that was, was inspected and found to be an error and they corrected it, done any problem. So those are the changes that we're recommending and there'll be a few more that will come to you as the planning commission looks through some of these trying to align a little bit more with the state code on, on what to include. Make sure that we're not including things that are superfluous and not needed, but that are important for, for the city to have, so.
Thank you, Wayne.
Okay, yeah.
Any other comments or questions?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Very good, thank you.
The only question I would have is do any of these require a city public hearing as well? Or the one that's already been done, it's good.
It's sufficient, the one the planning commission had.
All right, item six, a grant management policy. Now, this is a little bit of a departure from what I recall from our last meeting, so Jody got some language from the neighboring city. Ben, I hear some whisperings that you are pitching this, is that true or is that not true?
It was part, when you go back to the minutes, you listen to the financial fiscal procedures and the grant and they were talked about together and somehow you had gotten thrown into the mix.
I volunteered for line item number seven.
No, I.
But not six.
Okay.
So I, but I do like this idea. I do like having a grant policy in place to make sure that we're, you know, talking about the utilization of the funds.
Well, and, and so I'll, I'll just explain at, at a high level what my concerns are in both directions. You know, one, it is what we talked about last time where, you know, I sometimes think I might be signing things that I don't really know how they're being used or, or, you know, what the intent behind it is. And some of it might even require council vote. And, and so there's that, but then in the other direction, the last thing I want to do is add a layer of bureaucracy to a well-functioning machine. So those are the two considerations in my mind, but since it's on the agenda, I think that we should have some discussion about it if anyone has any thoughts.
I know that you have, Craig and I talking on number eight about the current grants, but we have kind of discussed this aspect of a grant policy. One of the things that, that I think I could speak for both of us and just what you said is the level of bureaucracy in managing the grants, because a lot of times, I mean, we do want it to be transparent, obviously. It is funds that are being brought to the city. Craig and I both have to, when you have your, your grant there, you are very, the silo is very small. And you have to report very often to whoever gave you that grant to showcase where that money has been spent and how. And it's, it's very regular and so sometimes, and sometimes money has to be spent in a certain timeframe. So if we're always having to come back, I mean, I can see the, the point of, of coming and saying, we would like this, is there a match? No, yes, how are we gonna do that? I can understand that part, but once it's been established what the scope of the grant money is for, I would hate for that grant money to be stifled and, and not be able to go forward because it has to come back every step for, for a vote, because sometimes we only meet once a month and that may make it two or three months before you can even implement anything. And if grants have to be spent on a certain timeframe, which we had talked about, that could really be a disadvantage for us overall, but.
So you really have a couple of different types of grants. I mean, most of the grants that I go for, so say a couple of years ago, I had twenty-five hundred bucks I was gonna spend on radios. A grant come up through the state fire marshal's office for ten thousand dollars. I had to make a cash commitment. I used my twenty-five hundred for that, that I had for radios already. We have a grant for radios and I was able to buy twelve thousand five hundred dollars of the radios because I already had the twenty-five hundred earmarked for a radio. That's typically ours and we have to, and the stuff I've done, you have to spell out exactly what you're buying, whether it's PPE or whatever, and it's, if I have to have a matching fund, it's always what I have in my budget for that item. And so what I do is I grow my budget money from twenty-five hundred up to that twelve thousand five. Now, that doesn't happen every year, which it did, because then I'm just a ticket. I've done PPE, I've done radios, I've done hoes before. And it just, it makes that money go forward. If I ever wrote a grant that said, hey, you have to have a ten thousand dollar match and I didn't have any money, I would have to come to council and just say, hey, I got a chance for this grant. But I would be asking for ten thousand dollars that I know that we don't have in our budget. Then when we did the eighty-five thousand grant for the fuel reduction program, we had twenty thousand dollars for fuel for wood chipping. And so that grant was written knowing that we had twenty thousand dollars to do the, the chipping. And it grew that up to the eighty-five. And that one I'll be closing out in November. But it's a super narrow window and what we can spend it on.
So I don't, I don't think, at least what I recall of the conversation and what I'm, what I see as being important isn't that we're approving every step along the way. That, that, I mean, we're a small enough city and I think we've got competent enough people that we don't need to do that. What I do think definitely needs to happen is whether it's done on the front end with, hey, we're thinking of applying for this grant. Or B, we got this grant and here's what we did with it. I think there needs to be something on one of those two ends. As far as the middle, I don't care.
Now, I will say that with Craig's situation, you do have money. With some of the other grants, they're, I mean, you, you don't have a budget for the things that you want to use. So I think that in that case, it would be especially important.
Well, that's, that's why I applied for this particular grant is because, because my time can be counted as the in-kind donation, right? The match, as it would say, because it's not a specific number, it's just that there's consistency. Now, with, with this, I'm calling it strategic planning because it goes into general plan as well. We would count my hours, we would count our steering committee hours, which two members of the planning commission are sitting on that level so that when, if something is identified that needs to go to planning commission, it can go in a timely manner. All of the planning commission hours then also can be counted because they're doing the work that we can showcase our, our general plan at the end. And so those, that grant only required those in-kind matches. Now, I have sent stuff to, to Janet and to the Parks and Trails Committee about the additional Parks and Trails grant. They'll have to look at those very specifically to make sure that it says an option for those in-kind donations because we are able to do that more readily than other communities. But again, I think that it's important, to your point, did. But again, I think that it's important, to your point, David, that we make sure that it is something that we need, that we want, and that we can manage in a way that is consistent with our overall goals and objectives and then funding streams to make sure that we are not getting ourselves into a hole of some sort.
Okay, thank you. Let me get Ted's input and then back to you then.
Yeah, maybe one thought as you think about grants, and this comes back to Craig's presentation. And maybe I should borrow one of those bulletproof shins. Because I know, I know we get really tight on budget. A lot of these grants happen during the course of the year, right? After the budget's set. Some of the communities we work with, obviously some of the bigger ones have specialists that do grants in their cities and all that kind of stuff. But the important thing is the council sometimes sets aside in the budget year just some funding for grant money in hopes they can leverage that money into a lot more money. So just a thought going forward as far as when you're talking to grant policy, should it be more than just, let's talk about it? Maybe it should be something that said, let's maybe build a budget item for grants for the year so that if something comes up that works for the community and we need some match funding, we can look at it and say, yes, we've got some of this match funding. Let's go for this grant.
And that's kind of to your point, Ted, is why we had decided to set aside the ARPA money because we know there's going to be matching grant funds. We don't have to put anything out because we have 100% of those funds that could be matched by the state, not our matching. We are bringing the money, they're doing the match. And so that's to Ted's point is if you are prepared and something comes along that's really beneficial, then you can jump on it. They have very short windows of time to apply and to get accepted.
And there are lots of cities that are professional at this, right? They set money aside every year. They have lots of grant money with some, you know, smaller matching dollars. One to four sometimes, you know? It leverages a lot of their money.
To David's point too, I mean, I don't think there'd be anything wrong with a heads up. Just, hey, we're either putting in, like you said, sometimes I just do them last minute. Like I'll see it come through and I'll type it up. I don't, I don't get, I probably, I don't get as many as I, I, how do I say that? I mean, I don't get many, not compared to what we write. But if, if we do, if we give you a heads up and just say, hey, I just got 10 grand. It's going toward radios, at least you guys know.
Yeah, I think there's an element of, again, the whole transparency part is that we communicate and maybe that's through the meeting minutes, whatever, that these are the grants we receive. Now, again, I get that we don't receive them all the time and so it might be a very rare thing. But it would at least be kind of a nice thing to say, you know, put it as a line item on our work session saying, we received a $10,000 grant or we received this for this purpose.
Well, and to that point, so the citizens know that we're doing everything we can, right? To bring in work.
Well, and when you see that line item that says grants, that says $10,000, you're like, well, what is that? I mean, right? So I totally get that.
I think for me, when it comes to like a grant management policy, I don't, I don't see it as the council needs to approve said grants or even how they're utilized necessarily. For me, like David's saying, it's, I would love to say, this is what we have. This is where it came from and this is what we're doing with it. So there's a slight degree of, I want Craig to come in here and brag a little bit, right? Say, hey, this is what I've done, this is what I did, and this is how I got it. So now I know, okay, Craig's got some experience here. I can now go to Craig and say, hey, this is what I'm looking at for, say, PTR. Help me, right? Nope, I'll just, I know how to find you, right? But just to know, right? Also, I want to know more about what, say, Craig is doing, you know, and what the programs are. So it also helps us coordinate certain things, you know, from our different silos so that we're more synergistic and we can work together, you know? And not to complain about anything, but you know, it was like when you guys had this county come up with that toy on the front of the skid steer, create a path, you know? It would have been really cool to, I don't know, but maybe know beforehand so the PTR could maybe work with you to say, hey, could this turn into maybe a pedestrian trail? And maybe that would just get in the way.
Well, yeah, and this was just, they were learning how to run that piece of equipment.
For sure. But you know, just a little bit more heads up on what everybody in the city is doing and grant gives us a way to.
So, I mean, as far as the level of specificity, I mean, so we could, we talked about last time just having as a standing item on council agenda, which probably could accomplish that purpose. Or if we wanted to formalize it and have something that is fairly bare bones.
Also hope to get a little more eyes on the contracts too.
The one thing I would not want to have happen is for us to encumber the process so badly that we don't get grants.
Yeah, amen.
That would be terrible.
Because it is a big process just to get a grant. I mean, you're jumping through a lot of hoops and you're doing a lot of different things. And those who write grants get used to kind, I mean, you don't get used to it, but you know that they're going to ask you a ton of stuff. And so, yeah, not to hinder that process because I think people would just give up and that we don't need that because they need increased revenue for certain things that we can't put in our budgets.
All right, well, I'm finally leaving as a standing council item, urgent item, unless the consensus here is we need to...
Let's try it and see how it goes.
Okay.
We can always change it.
All right. See, that wasn't so bad.
We haven't gotten to his yet.
Mike's there.
And I actually...
Oh, we're tailing Mike.
I regret, Chris, Marianne's mother passed away. And so that's why Chris is not here. So we certainly, they send our condolences to their family. I should have mentioned that at the beginning, but that's why Evan is not going to be present.
I did not want to have that conversation with Sean Craig.
What's that?
She lived in Payson, so Chris' family's here.
Chris and I not yet.
Oh, but maybe they'll be here for Eddie.
Yeah, I think they got their family stuff going on. I don't know. I didn't, we talked yesterday.
So it's hard though.
Yeah, that's, that's on the shoe. Okay, so we'll revisit that one when we have Chris's input. Item eight, discussion on current grants, just like we talked about.
Yeah, I can give the update on this one. It's really coming together nicely to start with this idea of a strategic plan, working through citizen input. We have a planner through Rural Consulting, which is a part of Jones and DeMell, who is helping us with the planning aspect. We also have two different strategic planners who are strategic analysts who are coming in and helping us run these focus groups that we're going to be putting on in the city. There, Mike and I have gone over the contract with them and we will be submitting it and explaining it to you when we get it.
True.
Because both you and I have to sign that contract. But it will, it's really looking up, the state called me, state office of planning and budget called me yesterday and they want to meet next week to maybe showcase Woodland Hills as a pilot on how little cities can do this with a small amount of money. And how we're not all, not all small cities are just have to be stuck in status quo, living paycheck to paycheck, but we can have vision. And that how does that go into our general plan process? And so that's where we're at with that, with that particular grant. Both of them have a scope of work that they have brought to us. Again, we'll be doing these focus groups. All of you will be invited to attend at least one of them to give your input. And then the steering committee, which I said, we have two members of the planning commission who serve on that, that's Ted and Lori. And then they will be consistently taking things back to Wayne and to the planning commission to say, here's some ideas, do we need to tweak things? Do we need to change things? And how does that do so that we're not just stuck at the end of the process with a pile of stuff to be changed, but that we could be more, you know, that we can be more prepared and do changes along the way because some take more planning and public hearings than others, right? And so that's where we're at at this point. We are, we did, just for all of your knowledge is that we did the planner, which is Mike Hanson, which you have met with Rural Consulting. He's also...
You met Jones and DeMell?
Uh huh, yep. And so I had him verify that the money that we received from ARPA and the money we received from this grant cannot be used for infrastructure projects. And so that was a definite no and that we need to stay within the scope of the project. They've given you a kind of a brief outline in our packet tonight. It's sort of weird because we had to write like 20 pages or something and then they had to narrow it down to like 200 words in each section just to give an overview. And it was all done on Google Docs, so you can't just print it out like it was normally submitted. And so this kind of just, we asked for 125,000 and we got 116,000. We were one of the top ones in the entire state for this funding. That difference is our in-kind match, not a cash match, but the in-kind. And we will be able to get that pretty well right away. We will be working with some of this, different things that are, that showcases. Our ultimate goal is that strategic plan that is, is a living, breathing document that can go into our general plan because strategic plan has more to it than just land use. Where our general plan is land use. And so there will be two different plans that come out of the same, same pot of money. Although not all of it will go to general plan because the planning commission has already started their process by dividing up the general plan. They're all looking for what changes may or may not be able to. Our part will be recommending based on our focus groups, et cetera, on where is our mission, vision, and values? And if that is not aligned with current ordinances, what do we need to do in land use to change that? If there are other things that are just policy and procedure that we need to change, then that will come to the council. But that's, that's kind of an overview of what we're doing and why we're doing it.
Great.
So is Mike the one running the focus groups?
No.
And is Mike working with the focus group?
Yeah, we're all working together. So it's a combining team collaboration. So he is a professional planner. And so he does the zoning and updates and things like that. The other two are Gwendolyn Smith and Delina Tonks. They're both PhD. Their company is, I gotta pull it out, ooh, what is their company called?
Allegiant or...
Allegiant, Allegiant Solutions. And they're out of Draper. And this is what they do for their living is go in at corporate or municipal level and do these focus groups. They will define, not only collect the data for us, they will also be doing the analysis, the metrics, and then helping us with strategy and objectives. And so it's pretty comprehensive showcasing what we can do.
So Mike is the planner and they need help with the execution of the plan?
And then, well, they're just two different parts of the plan. And then, but we all work together. So Mike will be at all of the meetings and we have had some Zoom meetings already. And we've been collaborating on which scope of work they each have and yet in collaboration with each other. And then I'm reminding them of what Woodland Hills is because they're all outside, right? So they go on their strengths, but that's a benefit to us that they are looking at us, but I'm maintaining quality of life and what we think is important to us. And I think it's really coming along well. And I can, as soon as we have approved their scope of work, I can send that to all of you so that you can see their credentials as well as what the, what our plan is for utilizing both of them. Because they have a different skill set. The two, the two groups have a different skill set that they have to collaborate to have the overall project go forward. And so we're doing this in phases. This is the first phase.
Wonderful. I was just, you know, this, the collaboration, running, you know, teams and things, that's my wheelhouse to degree. And so I was just wondering, because sometimes I've found that if we've got one group that does one thing and another group, they can sometimes actually, you know, inflict and cause problems. You know, one just stirs up or it's not just over here and the other has to deal with the consequences. So if they're working together, good.
We've had several meetings together just to verify what this vision is and then who has which role and how it will come together as we keep going.
Cool.
Great. Ted?
So maybe just to add to that real quick, because I can give you a little bit of peek into Mike's mind. So when this got kind of all organized, he was a little bit nervous at first because he wasn't sure how all this was going to come together. And it was a different type of approach than he's done before. But I think since then, they've had a few meetings with the group and with Carrie in talking about this. And he's now feel like they're on a good page to go forward. And in some respects, he's kind of interested to see how this comes together because it's a little different approach than he's used to, but...
We're an experiment.
You're kind of a pilot.
Pilot.
Because he says if this, if this works like they're thinking, this could be something that other communities could benefit from, so.
Yeah, he, Mike's going to be hopefully using our process as a toolbox as he, as a rural consultant goes to all the small cities that he can showcase what the possibilities are with minimal amount of government outreach. And then the state is also, like I said, I mean, we meet with Laura Hanson and she's interested to see, because she's been given directive from the legislature to do this, 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 and this, right? With regards to community growth. And so she's anxious to see, we're not spending millions of dollars what some people think you have to have. And we're going to really utilize our citizens and then these experts who are in their field to then gather that data and showcase what possibilities are.
Thank you.
And if I can add some branding too, some new branding.
Sure. All right, well, that sounds exciting. Any other thoughts, comments on that? Okay, then we'll advance to Craig.
My grant's almost over. In the end of November, they extended it for these next two months with the bins. Snow didn't help, you know? Kind of pushes people out of their yard and their house. So we'll see how it ends up. We should get some more clear weather in November. We typically do.
So they're still out, collecting two trees I need to...
Yeah, I'll maybe leave them out till, as long as I can, until Corbett chases me off the road because of snow falling.
I'll just push them out of the way.
But...
We got the big orange pile back.
So we're winding down. It looks like we ended up with, he sent me a message, we had about 185,000 in in-kind matching. So I exceeded, I only had to have 85. So with the work of the residents that they've done, some of the programs that we had, we would pay for half the residents if they had somebody come in. You know, we could pay for half the tree cleanup. That worked out pretty well, but we ran out of, we ran out of that funding pretty quick. And that's why I had to ask to move that 25 grand over to the dumpsters. So hopefully we can see a good, strong run to the dumpsters and use it up. I mean, it's, the biggest thing about the grant that I look at is it was able to let us get our fuel reduction program going, paying our firefighters out of it. And that's been, that's been big.
And you say that some of the grant money was used to help individual lot owners clear their...
Yeah, last year we put out a message in the newsletter that stated that if they cleared their lots, if we get some bids, we could pay for half. And I had a handful of people, Sherry Berger did it. Yeah, there was some, we had some, we had some good lots.
And we also put it out there for people to go online and fill out the form that said, we have cleared and we were reiterating over and over again that this would help our grant money. So that people would sign up and give their hours and say what they've done.
That's right.
And so we ended up, I mean, it'll, I'm kind of tired of the monthly reports. I mean, because managing them is, it takes time. But it's, it's worth it. But I'll be ready for a break from reports. That's where we're at.
Great, thank you. Great, thank you.
I do have one other question, if that's okay. From me, you know, preparing for my presentation on the policies and procedures with these grants, do they fall outside of the scope of contracts per percentages? You know, the numbers that you and I went over. If it's over forty thousand dollars, we gotta jump through these hoops. If it's in over ten thousand but under four thousand, we have, or forty thousand, we have to do this, you know? And those have to be approved by the council, those contracts and things like that?
The only thing that I've heard when I've asked about this on, on the state level is that our procurement, so if we need an RFP, ours is fifty thousand. If that's the case, then we need to go out to bid, otherwise.
Forty, I think it's forty.
Or forty, okay, it's forty, it's forty. Then it would need to go out to bid. If it's under forty, then we're okay. But other than that, I think because the money is coming from that allocation that's already there, it's not in our traditional budget. I mean, so like if you needed to.
Some of the grant, the grants that I do, we have to comply our policies and procedures. So the grants that I've always done, they do fall under that guideline. So if I ever got a grant for a fire truck, it would have, it would go to the typical, typical procedure.
Yep.
That's the same with state and federal grants.
Yep.
Anytime you do state and federal grants, it first comes back to the agency's procurement policy. So it'd be the city's procurement policy you were with that grant. If the, if the specific city or agency doesn't have one, then it falls to the state. Then you follow state guidelines.
Okay.
So I'm assuming that whoever is calling the grant game would just have to ensure that our existing policies.
So I guess for my clarification then, do you have the authority to sign a contract if it's under forty thousand without bringing it to the council, or?
Per policies and procedures, it would need to come to the council.
If it's over, over ten, under forty, right?
Correct.
See, you want to be careful too, because you're, most of the time, you're not going to get in trouble upfront. It's when they come and audit you. So they come and audit your grant. That's when they'll see that you have, now, they haven't done, I, I've never been audited before, but I save, I save everything.
State and federal grants, they make an attorney. You have to have an attorney write a letter. The city attorney has to write a letter to the agency saying that you followed your procedure. He has to opine to it. So when we do state and federal grants, that's the process. We have to, like we have the water projects.
So if the mayor were to sign a contract more than ten thousand, we would need to have it approved by the council, but if it's.
So between, I think ours and Ben made, between ten and forty, it has to be approved by the council, right?
And forty and above, for sure.
Forty and above has to go out for public appetizing and bidding.
Correct.
Under forty doesn't have to go out for public appetizing bidding, but has to come to the council.
So is it forty and under, or forty and over?
Ten to forty.
Forty thousand, one dollar, I think is what, I can't, it said something like that.
Yeah, because that, because if the line is forty, then it's forty and one dollar, it goes out. If it's forty, then it stays under.
I, we read it the other day.
Yeah, because I think I reread it too.
So it says, "All purchases of supplies and contractual services when the estimated cost therefore does not exceed forty thousand dollars, it shall be made open to market without formal bid, procedures, selections. All open market purchases in an amount of ten thousand or greater, where it are possible, will be based on at least three competitive bids, and shall be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder." And then it has a whole list of what responsible means. One of the gaps that I did identify, and I'd love you guys to just think about as we prepare for our conversation next council meeting, is there is a, a whole, per my understanding, between fifteen hundred and ten thousand. We don't have a clear policy and procedures around that number bracket.
Isn't that the mayor?
It does not say.
It's not.
So we just need to fill that gap. But I just want to, you know, as grants fall into this, then we just need to make sure it goes through, you know? If it's forty thousand and one dollars, then Jody has a longer list of things she has to do. Post it in the public spot, put it in the newspaper, and it's, it's extensive.
So with respect to these grants that are, we're working through right now, I mean, is there something that does need to come from the council?
Well, yes, so, so yeah, we have one that you already signed. That was, that was over that ten thousand mark. And then we have one that will be coming up, but, so I will have Jody put that on the next agenda.
So maybe we should also just to cover our bases.
Put both of them on.
Put both of them on the next agenda.
Yeah, so that would be for Mike Hanson's, we, as well as Allegiant Solutions.
I'm glad it's Kerry and I.
So, 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 so just put it, put that on as, as Mike Hanson, Rural Consulting, and, and then Allegiant Solutions, those two, and we'll bring that to the council meeting.
Great. So that's the one where we have to, I think, be especially careful, just to make sure. I mean, it doesn't need to be micromanagement by the council, but definitely needs to comply with our spending formalities.
So when we buy stuff for the, to the firefighter grant, it's, the places you buy from are on state contract. And so we provide the price when we're applying for the grant. And I've seen them knock it down like a pair of pants. I've seen them knock it down three bucks, because the new GSA pricing was three dollars less. And it just wasn't, I don't know, I don't know. But, so, they don't control, like the radios I bought, when I bought those, it was through Motorola, and there's really, you can't, you buy Motorola from Motorola. There's no bids, they're just, so once in a while, you'll run into stuff like that.
Okay. As long as we're legal. All right, thank you for raising that. All right, any, anybody else have anything on that? Okay. Ida nine, overdrive, will we come again?
All bets are off with the snow, and with pricing increases, and it's a little bit beginning of spring. I don't know what else to say.
Did we get the numbers though that we're, okay, here comes Ted to rescue us.
Oh, I was grabbing my phone, watch it.
He was grabbing, he was grabbing this.
And I didn't get a chance to get the, I updated the numbers. If you want, we can talk about where we're at.
Can I ask a question? In addition to the updated numbers, which I think are important too, do we have everything else in, in place so that we could, assuming we had the money, go to bid in the spring?
Close. So where this started is when LEI was engineers, they put together a, I call it about a seventy percent design. It was enough for us to get bid schedules, to get pricing. And so we have about a seventy percent design. From there, we'd have to finish that out at about an additional thirty percent design, whatever that would, whatever that would be. And then put together a bid contract documents, which is basically your bid book that goes out to the contractors for bidding. So there would be a little bit of engineering left to get ready for bidding, and then, and then we'd have to bid.
Okay, so is that work something that we could get approved and get moving? I know that's not your question, that's our question.
Hey, I'm happy to.
Well, I think there's, I need to even take it a step back, because I, I, there is some concern about spending that kind of money on that stretch of road. So I do think we need to revisit that as, like, do we want to make that little stretch of Lofer the super roads that we're going to come, or do we want to apply our same shoddy standards?
To afford it.
Yeah, that we can afford. So I, I, I think that, and why might the numbers were important?
Is there something in between? The old road or the shoddy road, is there something in between?
So maybe I can give you kind of where we're at, because we are at the in-between, basically, which is close to a full reconstructed road. So when we were looking at redoing the road, I think the geotech recommendation was take everything out that's there and start over building up the road again, because the dirt was kind of hauled there. So we kind of revisited that, and there are some other things that you can do rather than taking out the entire field that's there. We, the way we, it's engineered right now, we go in and take out about four to six feet of it, and we, just enough we can push it off onto the shoulders, we don't have to actually haul it away, and make the shoulders less steep, you know, milder slopes on the shoulders. And then we would bring in what they call a geo grid material, which adds strength to the subgrade without having to add dirt. So it's a, it's a, it's a fabric material, woven fabric material that you put in, you basically just lay down on the road, build dirt around it, and it adds that strength without having to add the dirt.
And is that a standard that we could apply to all future roads? Because that's the other thing, is that if we hold this section of the road to such a high standard that we will never be able to meet on any other roads, then it seems like it's not especially well spent money. So to me, I would think that what we are aiming for is a standard that anytime a road is to be replaced, we can afford to do it. So that's kind of the middle ground that I would be looking for.
Yeah, yeah, and really, so one of the things that we're working on, so we just also started another capstone project. But one of the things we're, we're looking at, which we kind of did last time while we were trying to go the next level, so sometimes you don't need to rebuild the roads completely. Now, Woodland Hills, probably so, but it depends on the condition of the road as to what the appropriate measures are to reconstruct the road, to get the best life out of it. And sometimes it's not a complete rebuild. Sometimes you can add a cement material to the subbase or to the road base and compact that in, and you don't have to reconstruct the whole road. Sometimes you add this geofabric. So, so I would say that it ought, for new roads, we ought to have standards. For redoing our existing roads, I think it ought to be probably a case by case basis, because it may not need to be a complete rebuild. Maybe there are things we can do, depending on the condition of the road, that wouldn't be a rebuild.
So the other thing about that, about pushing the dirt off the side of the road, and of course, it depends on where you're talking about, but we've already pushed dirt onto Glenn Anderson's property and whomever bought Mick Hill's house's property. And we don't have grading easement for either of those two properties. So.
And can we get one even, probably?
Glenn's willing, again, it depends on where we're pushing the dirt. He kind of had a line that he was like, please don't come past this. So again, it's, I guess, I guess these are the details that I think we've, you know, if we're not going to get it done this year, which I, I understand, well, I don't understand, but I get it, right? Then we ought to at least do everything we can to resolve those issues so that we are in a position where we're ready when we actually have the money.
Agreed, yeah.
But we've got the money, right? We just need to pull trigger.
Did we ever get the full amount of money that we were needing? Because we were like fifty or sixty thousand over what we had.
But he, he's down for, he made it more than he needed.
Well, not to, yeah, we're still over.
We're still over, yeah.
So when we were doing the water project, when we were redoing the roads, we had some, there was some money that was set aside for that project specifically. Well, not specifically. There was money that was set aside to redo, I think it was spring at the time, this lofer was in there. We set aside a bunch of money to do this, and we used a bunch of that money on the water project to redo the roads while we were there spring, and some of those we'd already planned on doing. And so while we were doing that, we're kind of keeping track of what was remaining. And specific numbers, I believe we have around two hundred and twenty remaining in that fund, two twenty-five years, Chris may be able, but I think last I heard, around two twenty. And the road costs, so we, we, taking a look at the road cost, we broke it down because part of it, you know, roughly fifty-one percent of the road is Summit Creek and forty-nine percent Woodland Hills, right? So it's a shared cost. The entire road is, let me look at the second page here. It's over six hundred thousand, yeah. Can you hold that? No, just hold it all, let me grab my glasses.
It's hard to be an old man.
It's about five hundred and ninety-four thousand for the entire road. And when we looked at that, we specifically broke it down by wanting improvements on, are on which side of the, of the property line, if you will. And for Woodland Hills, it was about, it's about two hundred and eighty-nine thousand. And for Summit Creek, it'd be about two hundred, or three hundred and six thousand. It's roughly fifteen thousand dollar difference.
Yeah.
So we're sixty-nine thousand dollars short on our side.
Roughly, yeah. And that's, I just updated today on some bid numbers. We got on some pricing two weeks ago on another road project. So I updated this one today. Now, I did include in that, so the actual, the actual, when I add up just all the bid pricing, the actual money comes out to two hundred and fifty-one thousand. Then I always put it, when I'm planning projects, I put about a fifteen percent contingency on that. That's the two eighty-eight. So my actual number was two fifty-one. I add fifteen percent, because we don't know where the market's going to be when we actually bid it. And that's where the two eighty-nine comes from.
So Ted, with that though, it was only designed at seventy percent, so we still have to pay a thirty percent engineering fee on top of the two eighty-nine.
Get ready, yeah.
And how much do we anticipate that might be for that additional thirty percent sign?
Couple million, then I can retire. I'll give you, I'll give you the name to write the check to you. I don't know, I was just thinking about that today. I could put together a little cost. It would be in the neighborhood of ten to fifteen, probably, to finish it up, get the bid docs ready, get it advertised.
So I think that what we need to decide as a council, perhaps not tonight though, is, is is that the road that is wanted there? Or, I mean, I, I know I'm talking to Corbin, there are some less expensive alternatives that we could implement. Yeah, well, I, I don't love that.
I mean, the concern I have is that when, when CMT went out and did their, their investigation, they, they did a pile driver test. Now, they dig a hole, they bore, they bore a hole, and then they go down to, I think they went down to three feet, and then they do this pile driver test, and they hit, they hit this pile with a hammer, and they count how many impacts it takes to go six inches, I think it was. Well, in the top eleven feet that was, in the first place, was proposed to be removed, one of those, one of those tests was twenty-one impacts. Another one was forty, forty or forty-two, something like that. And then, once they got into the native material that Bushnell's had, had installed twenty-five years ago, the, the, the same test took six impacts. So to me, we're tearing out stuff that's seven times better than the stuff that was there originally. And that just doesn't make any sense to me. The, the, the biggest reason, from what I understood, the reason we're tearing it out is because it wasn't testable material. It was too rocky, too bony, they call it. The rocks are too big. Well, you can't get any better compaction than, than bedrock, right? And that's all rock. Well, so we're tearing out stuff that's better than the stuff that's been there for twenty-five plus years for the sake of a piece of paper that says that it passed a compaction test. And to me, that just doesn't make any sense. And so I, I'm saying, we, we did all the, all the roads in town. We just did four miles of road in town, and none of those roads would, would pass the test that we're imposing on Lofer Drive. And it just doesn't make any sense to me. We just, all we did on the four miles of water main that we just, that we just put a new road back on top of was, we, for lack of a better term, we put a little lipstick on it. Now, we own it, and we're responsible for the maintenance forever, right? We're a developer, they want to sell it to the city or give it to the city, and they want the city to take over responsibility for it. And so to me, it's justifiable to have a, a higher standard. And I just, I just have, again, it's your money. I just have a lot of heartburn about wanting to tear all that road out just because we don't have a piece of paper that says it passed a compaction test. And, and I know I'm simplifying it, but that's, to me, that's what we're doing. And I'm an engineer, and I'm, and I'm the, you know, I should have waited till Ted left to, to give my spill, but.
So there's a couple more additions on to that. One of the reasons though too, is because if we can use that field, push it off the side, we bring the geofabric back in, which helps add the strength in that upper layer. But more importantly, it saves us guard rail too, along the sides of some piece of dirt.
Glenn Anderson told me there was no way. So in order to, in order to avoid guard rail, you have to get it to a four to one slope, according to Ashto. It has to be a recoverable, what, what Ashto calls a recoverable slope. And so it has to be a minimum four to one. And Glenn said, no way. Are we going to get a four, I mean, bottom line.
So right now, we've got guard rail coming out from Glenn's ways.
On Glenn's side.
On Glenn's side. And the rest of it is where we push the fill material off, past Glenn's to get that.
Right.
Or if I wanted to save guard rail for the entire both sides of the road.
And so we'd have guard rail on the Glenn Anderson's side. On the other, on the other side, the guy that bought Mick Hill's house, I talked to him and he was more than willing, with, with a little bit of concession, he was more than willing to let us get that six to one slope on his side. And so again, we talked about taking dirt from developers, from contractors and, okay, I'm going to charge a guy, you know, fifty bucks a load or a hundred bucks a load to dump it off right there. It's all beyond the structure of the road. It's all outside, it's all the fill slope that's being, that we're installing. And I'm going to get paid. We're, you're going to get paid to take somebody's dirt. And we're going to make a, we're going to use that to create that fill slope on the other side of the road.
And I, I am not trying to advocate cutting corners in any respect, but I, I think that this is something that we've got to consider. Is this within our means to do? And if we're going to do it here, can that be our long-term effort?
Sustainable on all of our roads.
If it's not, then maybe we don't need the, as much as I appreciate all the, the attention to detail, but if there is an equally viable solution that isn't quite as expensive and is more in line with our other roads and, and more in line with living within our means, then I think we should at least look at it. But what I would like to do to, what you were saying, David, is, is I'd like to get a plan. Decide what road we want and then get a plan. And then when the snow melts, execute on it and get it done.
Because we're looking at three hundred and four thousand with the engineering in there for that hundred and fifty feet. And it is hard to, to, when residents are calling, to justify that when they have pothole or whatever, right? And knowing that we're not going to be able to approve that same type of funding for other roads. I do think, I appreciate your comments because I think we do need to be mindful when we're talking to residents who are saying, well, what happens if I have my pothole, right? And.
Or why don't I have that quality of reminder in my house?
Right. And so I just think that it's good to be mindful of that as we're progressing forward. It's going to be hard to make up the hundred and twenty to three oh four in this budget cycle.
Two twenty.
Well, the two twenty, yeah, the two twenty to the three oh four, that's not going, that would not be an easy thing for us to squeeze out of anywhere.
Especially with our local budget.
One thing you, one thing you could do, not saying this is always a great thing to do, but you know, you get all the engineering ready, put it out to bid, see where the numbers come in. In the bid documents, we always put in there, the owner has the right to cancel the project if it falls with outside, outside of their funding abilities. And then if the bids don't come in favorable, you can cancel them.
So can we use that two twenty to finish the engineering and then take the next step of the process?
See where bids come in.
Yeah, I mean, that might be a way that we can go within this budget cycle and then be shovel-ready come the big thaw.
But it sounds like this section of road is more expensive than others simply because of sloping and grading and.
There's a couple of big costs in this one that haven't been in others. We got that big culvert that's crushed under there. It's got to be fixed or replaced somehow.
Yeah.
And that adds, you know, that's sixty-five, seventy thousand dollars.
We got a track of and reference.
For that culvert. Yeah. That'd be, I mean, that solves your budget problem if you figure out how to get that replaced. The other item is, we've got a little storm drain in this one that will pick up water. There's, so West Loafer kind of creates a low spot where you come to the middle. And all the water coming down, Summit Creek Drive makes that corner, comes around to West Loafer. So we, a couple of inlet boxes right there, pick up that water and we have curb and gutter. I said we, it was LEI to put together, but pick up that water and put it in a culvert and put it out with the drainage.
Okay, so, because if I, I ran some numbers.
Those are longer cities don't have.
Right, I ran some numbers per the, the amounts of distance that we're covering with this potential expenditure, right? And then I extended it across over the, the number of feet we have in the city of road, right? And it sounds like the numbers that I ran were completely, no, they were too high simply because this is a more expensive section of road. Even if we just do it with lipstick, it's going to be more expensive per square foot than other places in the city, right? So those numbers came out to about a hundred and eighty-nine million dollars if we redid the streets.
How much?
Hundred and eighty-nine million for all of our roads to be at this same level.
But it sounds like that number's not accurate if, because if we redid the roads to this same standard, it would be cheaper than a hundred and eighty-nine million simply because this is an abnormally expensive just because of the engineering. To get this thing to work, other places, we wouldn't need the drainage issues, we wouldn't need the fill, we wouldn't need guard rails, we wouldn't need the safety issues because our roads are all curly, you know.
Probably still drainage.
Yeah, but if we're just cutting up road down, say, you know, this deep, putting in our correct, say, eight, twelve to sixteen inches of road base and then the proper amount of road above it to get us to a good winter area, you know, road system versus our summer-only system we have in certain areas of the city, it would still be extremely expensive, but nothing like a hundred and eighty-nine million.
We don't really have summer-only.
Well, but when we first started, right? When Woodland Hills' first developer started building it, they built it to a summer-only specification, which is what we inherited, right? And those are the primary roads we need to really dump some cash into. And so it still is an exorbitant amount of funds, but maybe not as bad as, as the numbers that I.
And we can look at a few options too, if you'd like and see what the costs are going to be. For example, as much as it cringes me, the lipstick on a pig, because I'm an engineer, just because all the other roads are that way, I don't think it's, it can practice, it should continue.
Right.
Um, because you just build maintenance is all you're doing. Just kicking a can down the road is all. That's my, yeah, maybe Corbett should step out because that's my philosophy.
Do you guys need to borrow the shields?
Yeah.
But it is, when it comes down.
I'm retiring in ten years anyway, so.
When it comes down to it, though, it really is what, what the mayor said about sustainability and can we go forward with all of our roads which will need some form of, of repair or replacement as we go along? Do we set ourselves up for, for failure when we can't meet a certain standard or requirement even though we know that we, something else could be at least usable?
Yeah, I would like to see uniformity throughout the city if, if we can get it.
So and as to. Remember too, we kind of, sometimes it gets lost in the conversation that we're out of ordinance with the road the way it is.
Right.
Because of the length of it.
You're saying we got to do something.
There's another aspect that I think needs to be considered with the, the idea of going forward as soon as we feel comfortable and with whatever is presented to the, to the council.
I'll also say the road's being used.
Yeah.
It's, it's being used, you say?
Yeah. I don't know, I don't know who took the rocks out. I don't know if that was Summit Creek or.
Summit Creek's been using it at our blessing to store rock there that they were planning on using.
Well, the rock's gone now.
I would say.
Oh, is it all gone?
Hildor is in Summit Creek, not necessarily.
It's still.
Right, it's, yeah. It's Hildor and Summit Creek.
So the road's being used and it's not in what I would call a safe condition.
Well, so, I mean, it, it seems to me that we've, we've got to make a decision as to the type of road that we want. So I think Ted, what you were proposing would make sense to give us some options. I mean, one thing that we have talked about in our staff meetings is, and, and this is one of the capstone projects that we are wanting to look at is, and, and I think Ben, you, this was your idea. I don't want to take anything that we should order. A road's fee as opposed to the road being funded through property taxes where we can keep all of it and use it.
So we've looked at that.
Well.
There's some things that are changing on that because Mapleton and Pleasant Grove did that. Pleasant Grove got sued, Mapleton did not.
That's why we're calling it Mapleton.
Yeah. There's some things that are happening on a state level to try and adjust fees because what they don't want is cities just making up fees that have additional revenue, but to have it actually be going as, as a, it's not really an impact fee, but it is a road fee. And, and trying to remember if it's passed yet or not, but there are, there's some definite look at that because we can't keep up with infrastructure just based on property tax. And, and everybody's recognizing that. And so they're trying to figure out how it can be legally done. Yep, and legally done to where, to where the city can have that, that for specific roads, but not necessarily any what people might consider price gouging type thing, right? So.
And it might be a source of revenue that we can look at.
But you should talk with the Mapleton mayor.
The, the finance committee looked at like two years ago and the mayor, Craig, looked at it probably three years ago or somewhere like that. And road fees were not one of the tools that the state legislature at that time had given us that we could actually use.
Right, no, and it sounded like the winds might be changing a little bit. So I, I figured we can do something about that.
Yeah, the winds are changing, that's awesome. So maybe it's awesome.
I just met with the capstone group last week that's going to be working on this project. What they're going to do, because your roads get classified, there's an ASHTO, which is the guiding road design manual, so to speak, federal manual, that guides how you build and reconstruct roads. And they have guidelines on how you classify your roads and depending on the classification of the road, what level it is, depends on, determines the treatment you get, whether it's a full reconstruct, a milling overlay, whatever it be. And so they're going to work through that in our city. And then, because what, what we got to wrap our minds around is, is what is the dollars that we're talking about? Is it a hundred and eighty-nine million or something less? And so what they're, hopefully, what we're going to get them to do is classify the roads, determine what the reconstruct will be, put dollar numbers to it. And then that's where you can start looking at what should a fee be if we're going to do one to build up a fund to be able to redo our roads and do them, not necessarily do they all need to be full reconstructs? Maybe they don't, but at least we'll know and we'll have the right treatments applied to the appropriate roads.
And we'll have a nice little pile of cash that's dedicated to it that might make, you know, more longevity in our roads, something that we can actually accomplish. Because I, I, I agree with you, I, I don't like the lipstick kind of thing. I just don't know, you know, where we currently are. I mean, it might just be, yeah. Well, so Ted, if, if you wouldn't mind getting some, some proposals together, that would be great. And we can look at those and then decide on a plan.
Okay.
Okay, if I ask a quick question, make a comment about this? Something to consider whenever this happens is whether, if as a city, you bid the, the whole section and then we contribute money based on the percentage? Or if we just build our half with our own contractor and you build your, excuse me, your half and meet in the middle? Whatever makes the most sense.
I think same contractor.
Well, the other. Okay, so since you raised that issue.
You now know.
And then we do a little slide of more of that here.
I know, lots of noise. A thought would be, and again, I don't know where you are with your new, the new area of subdivision. But again, could we contract with Summit Creek to just build that road?
So instead of, yeah, I see what you're saying. Instead of you building the whole road and we've contributing, flip it around, we build it and you contribute your portion.
That's right. And if we, and if we can get the, you know, because you're building more road, so you presumably would get better pricing than what we might be able to get. Anyway, it's.
Maybe we could negotiate for two hundred and twenty.
Or maybe we could have a payment plan. Give us a good interest rate of telling you just finance.
Thirty here anyway. Anyway, it was a thought.
Yeah, it's good to have all these out in the open.
That actually is something that's becoming more popular now. It's called private, public-private partnership, PVD, where you partner with private entities to get some of the public work done. I'm starting to see that work on.
Well, I, I would like to take the temperature then. I mean, so do we want to ask Ted to put the proposal together? Do we want to have Ben go to Summit Creek and ask them to consider?
Does Ted need to finish the engineering for Ben to be able to take it, actually get a bid on it? So I think Ted needs to move forward no matter what, right? Because we can't get actual numbers until he's giving us what we're actually building, right?
Yeah. Ted, if you don't mind then, can you give us a few options, Ben?
So a few options of different types of roads that could be built and costs.
Yeah, that would be great.
One of which being lipstick.
Yeah.
You can leave lipstick off the list. Then we'll have two hundred and five.
It'll be high-end lipstick.
Doral said you only get chapstick, no lipstick.
Okay, thanks Ted. Okay, uh, all right.
You're going to kill me.
Proposal, Adam, Ted, proposal for sewer impact fee study, Loafer Drive. I mean, that's you remember, is that Ted?
No, um, we're still working on collecting figures and information. However, we do have an estimate from.
Cody. Cody, do you hear, EFG Consulting?
With Jones and Gamil of sixty-two hundred dollars to do an impact study fee for sewer. So that's something that.
Citywide?
Yes.
Really? No.
Well, this is for an impact fee.
Our sewer, impact fee for whatever sewer the city has.
I see.
This is how much we can, how much we can charge for an impact fee when somebody hooks up to the sewer? Because we've been kind of.
What we're doing now is, is not right.
Yeah.
So we need to change that. And this would be part of that, it would be part of that study. How do we change it? How, how can we move forward and have a legitimate impact fee for sewer? Uh, is, is that needed? Do we want it? And so that's what the study would, would give. And he's given us that, we've got a contract from him for sixty-two hundred dollars that we'd like to have considered to go forward with that, with that study. And he'll continue to gather information from us to help him in that study.
You just clarified, so impact fee, if you do, if you charge an impact fee, you have to do an impact fee study required by SICO. And I think we've been charging an impact fee for sewer.
Without this study.
You have a study?
I think we don't own a choice. I, 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 that's what I think is this is something that, I mean, I guess we have a choice.
EFG. We don't have a good choice. EFG Consulting is a group that, we don't own it, but we work with them a lot. He's a, he's a guy out of, he does a lot, this is what he does. He's doing the water run for us.
Great, okay.
He proposed, if you want to look at public facilities, wanted to pay for this eight thousand dollar square foot, little building.
Great, thank you. All right, any other?
Wasn't that, wasn't it actually sixty-four fifty?
I think it was like sixty-four fifty, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, the study, yeah, the numbers in here.
The, to do the impact fee analysis, it's sixty-four fifty, sixty-two. That's sewer. Oh.
So we're talking about the impact fee study?
Yeah.
Sixty-four fifty.
Sixty-four.
Sewer impact fee study. He's doing the water run for us already.
Okay, thanks Ted. All right, Craig, you're up.
All right, uh, last month, we went down to Florida. Three of us went down for the fire truck, called a pre-build meeting. So we go down and we go over the line items. I think our line items on this truck were three hundred and seventy-one different line items that they break the truck up into. So when we originally put in the bid for the truck, they come back, get about four hundred and nineteen thousand for the truck. And during our conversation, we agreed we, we should be able to outfit this truck for four seventy. And I still believe that's the case. We went down and we took some things off, we sat with the engineer, which was very helpful because there were some things on the truck that weren't going to be functional. They had to be moved. So we ended up, by the time we took stuff away, we added some stuff. We ended up being about ninety-six hundred more on the actual truck. But part of the, part of the savings on this is it, it ends up, I've got ladders already on the truck. I've got intake hose on the truck. I've got some nozzles on the truck for the monitor. The biggest increase that we did was probably scene lighting that we added. We took some lights out, but we put some bigger lights. Lights for us is very important when, when we're out at night, just to light up it. And we'd use that for medical and fire. So I still believe that we can still make it under the four seventy. But I wanted to, I just wanted to bring forth that, that it did go up for the truck, ninety-six hundred. It, it's a good thing we ordered it when they did. This year, the trucks now are going up. It, it's a good thing we ordered it when they did, this year the trucks now are going up twenty percent. It's, it's crazy, and they're out like twenty-eight months now, instead of the eighteen to twenty that we were out. Ambulances are almost, but thirty-two months.
So, so Craig, you're saying that although it's ninety-six hundred dollars over what we thought, we're still coming in the four seventy allocated?
I think I'll be able to, because I don't have to buy ladders now, I don't have to buy the suction hose. I don't have to buy the nozzles for the monitor, those are pretty pricey. Pipe poles, so that stuff's already on the truck. The things that, one of the, the other thing we added too was a monitor, so our, our big deck gun that, that we have on top of the truck, right now we have what they call a walkthrough. So we can walk through up there, we can grab the monitor and you can manually move it. This new truck you couldn't. So we went with a tethered remote monitor, so the, the engine, the pump, the engineer can run it from down below. And when we run a three-man attack, we don't have extra people to send up on a monitor. So we, you know, we stayed with the least expensive one, because they have full remotes. But I know we'd probably end up losing it or running over it or something, so this thing's heaven. But there was a couple of things that, that weren't on the truck, like the rear, the rear traction, the traffic light, I don't know, was missing, things like that, that was twenty-three hundred, so.
So since we're still coming in under the amount we, we authorized last year, we're not needing a vote on this, you're just giving us.
No, so, so what happened, yeah, and what happened was, it's kind of in the details, is if you look at the minutes, we talked about it, we talked up to the four seventy. But when it came for a vote, they voted that the mayor could sign for the, the PO for the fire truck. So Wendy signed for the PO for the fire truck, what was nine, four nineteen? And so the mayor, we need the mayor to sign the new change order, so it's gonna be more than the four nineteen. And so we, I, yeah, in theory, we already agreed that four seventy was it, but we really wanted to just bring it up to everybody here, so, so everybody knew.
So it doesn't change the budget at all?
Uh-uh.
It doesn't change anything beyond the red tape that we talked about earlier? Just making sure all the finances are done correctly?
Just make sure we do it right, yeah. Because if he signed it now, it, yeah, she already signed the PO in.
For four nineteen.
Yeah, but I, I would just ask for your approval on these up charges, because, I mean, the, what was, what was voted on doesn't specify that amount. And so while it's talked about like the anticipated cost would be four seventy, it's not like four seventy was approved, so I didn't wanna just sign it out of commission.
Budgetary items for ladders, for these nozzles and things was over on this line item. We, the former council voted over here on this PO.
Just to sign the final.
In equation, nothing's changing.
Now, if that first PO with that four seventy.
Equals the final bill.
Yeah.
You're saying some of that other column is bumped into the actual truck cost.
Yeah.
So you're saving money over here.
Yeah.
This went up a little bit, so actually we're probably gonna be lower than four seventy when it's all washed up.
I am hoping so, I mean, because I've, I've been able to get some good deals on stuff, and I, I mean, I might be able to use some grant money to leverage on getting some equipment, so.
And you, and you say you cut out the things like that you didn't need or that you weren't gonna use, right?
We did, so. So one of the things I did cut out, I cut out a, so we wanted auto eject, because we have auto eject on all our other service trucks. Well, when you go look at this type of truck, it's set up more like our heavy is, where the steps getting into the cab is where the plugins are. So you, we don't want firefighters stepping over those cords to get in the truck to start it, and then they automatically shoot out. So it didn't make any sense, so now they're, they mechanically remove them and they climb into the truck.
manually.
On the way.
Yeah, on the way, and I mean, that saved, that saved me a couple of grand. There was also a pump that, that threw cause of malon, it was all part of the system, this pump kept the air brakes up. Well, we're plugged in all night because of the compressor, you can hear it run. So there was no sense in having that, an extra compressor, and I think that was a thousand bucks, we saved. So, so yeah, there's some stuff that we just, we forego, because we didn't use it on this truck. And yeah, we didn't, it's not loaded, but I mean, I mean, like even our backup camera, we did one camera, a lot of the trucks have five. But we felt that one is what we really need for backing up the side ones, you know, right? And then there's the lighting for safety, we added.
Which is dark up here, so.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, thanks Craig, any other questions for today, comments? All right, perfect, thank you.
Well, thank you.
All right, so the budgetary items, we did not get any inquiries or requests, and Chris isn't here anyway, so maybe we're gonna need to table thirteen, or twelve, thirteen M. Or do you wanna discuss the financials? Really, I? It's okay, it's not me.
Not me.
Table with.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I have a question, but.
All right.
Most of it was good.
Okay, well then we'll wait for the next meeting on that one.
It did raise a question for me though, because I saw a, an expense for fiber for cameras. So are there any updates on the cameras that they've done?
Is Craig still here?
Coming along? I just saw the expense on there, so I was going to ask about it.
What was that?
The expense for the cameras is on the.
It said fiber for cameras.
So he's supposed to be coming and doing a walkthrough this month? He sent me a thing and I told him that I, I really didn't care if he just did the well.
He's been a long time. It's been a long time.
It has been a long time, and I, I mean, I think the biggest holdup is they were waiting for the fiber to get in at the park.
Is it there?
And I, there, we're on their schedule. So I, I basically told him, do the well, I mean, that's really where we need the coverage. And if, I mean, I, the, the biggest problem I see with this, the guy doesn't live in town.
Right.
That's the biggest problem. I mean, it's, it's, I don't really care about that, I mean, so I told Corbett today that he's gonna be coming up to go walkthrough. And I'll have him walk through the well items with, with Corbett, I mean, the other one's pretty simple. But it's, yeah, I, I don't know. I mean, we've already paid whatever for half of it, or I don't know where we stand on that. But pretty frustrating, and it's frustrating to fight the people who do business with them, and.
You know, it's too bad we paid so much, we could just get somebody else.
I know.
I know, and but I don't, I don't know where all that is, I, I know nothing about the contract or, I would just ask to help.
Sounds easier than it is. Because when we were evaluating different companies, I mean, it was, it was hard to get a company that actually did this and would come up here.
Their equipment's good, because we've used it before. I mean, I, I don't think that's the problem, he just, they're just so busy, people are just so busy now that they're trying to get somebody to do something.
Busy and short-staffed, a lot of people are really short-staffed.
So if you want to start a dual rating, then your sense of justice can be satisfied.
So, I, I mean, as soon as he, as soon as he gets back with me, he's trying to get it done, he's trying to get this like visit done in October, so they can get going on him.
Running out of days.
I know.
Hey, I have just a question, I saw the expense for fiber for the cameras, and so that.
Yeah, yeah, and, and Utopia, they haven't been much better, I mean, we, we had that site, that guy came out, he did all the drawings, we approved it. We got it signed, and the next thing I hear is the lady calls me and she wants to send a guy up here to do a walkthrough. I said, well, why do we need to do a walkthrough with him? Well, he needs to know where everything goes, I said, you guys already designed it.
Yeah, already been here.
We've signed it, the work order, and it's in. Oh. So they did some research and said, oh, we'll, we'll put you on the, we'll put you on the schedule, and I sent back kind of a snarky email, she goes, well, try to move you up. Now, it may have been, I don't know if they did it last week, but I don't think so, because they would've called me.
Yeah.
And they know where everything goes, we, we held off on the salt shed because we didn't know what's gonna go on with, whether we're gonna be moving it, so we didn't wanna do the fiber there. But the mailboxes are all run and the well is all done, as far as fiber goes. Yeah.
Thank, thank you.
Thanks, Craig.
Yep.
All right, W. Dustin?
Three times in one night.
I know, you're, you're earning your keep.
Sergeant.
Oh yeah, sorry.
Promoted already. Okay, so just some stats for the month of September.
You'll send them.
Yeah, I'll send it to you. No.
Is they worth it?
Yeah, it was worth sending. There, so we had nineteen calls that came in from citizens, um, we had five that came in for animal complaints. One of those was like a, an animal, a deer that had been hit, so that's, and then the rest of it was just animal complaints regarding mainly dogs.
Parking dogs.
So a couple of, uh, we had the one missing child that was later found, uh, some follow-ups. Medical calls that we assisted on, and then just, uh, generated by the deputy, um, or deputies, a couple of citizen contacts, we had twenty-four extra patrols. A couple suspicious calls and traffic stops, so on that one. Then, um, I have your Rylon forms.
Oh, good.
Pass those out to, make sure you guys fill them out and get them back to me tonight, you just need to sign them and, and we'll go from there with that one. Field trip to the sheriff's office?
Yes.
Do we wanna try to set a date?
Yes.
We can do evening, or if you wanna do a Saturday morning, we could do that too.
We still get a taste, Doral?
Dave.
What about going up to the SWAT, SWAT, uh, place and shoot?
We were. We, uh, we could look at that another time.
So what are we looking at, weekend?
So you guys tell me, whenever you wanna do it, we can make it happen, so what we'll do is we'll tour the sheriff's office.
Evening myself.
Evening, okay.
I can include the president.
Well, it's gonna be.
Yeah, we'll walk, we'll take a little tour of the jail.
Yeah, we're inside, okay.
I was thinking we're outside, but inside.
Yeah, we'll, uh, yeah, we'll be, we'll be in and out to different buildings and the nine-one-one center, so we'll just kinda sneak in and out of different places, but.
Okay.
You guys just kinda throw some dates out too.
Maybe our, our regular Tuesday, but on a off council night?
Yeah, we could do that. I don't know if you wanna, do you like November?
The first is the next one, other than that, then we have fifteen.
Fifteen?
Oh.
That's a peach year.
Yeah, that's not a peach year. Or the twenty-ninth.
November twenty-ninth, how's that look for a basic?
How about the first then, this next week?
Do you make that happen on November first?
When's our other meeting, Carrie?
So that, on November first, our emergency management meeting is like one to three. But if, if you're evening, let me look. It says my son has a mega band concert that night, but my wife was telling me that may not be the case. So we can plan for November first, and I will try to clarify that.
Just email us or something.
Okay.
What time are we looking?
Do not miss the band concert.
I know.
Yeah.
Especially on Megaband.
You guys can say the time and we'll.
What's good for you, mayor?
Uh, well, my day's already gone, I, it's not like I have to earn a living, so. Seven?
Okay.
And a PO.
Okay.
That, that work, yeah.
Are we talking one hour, two hours?
I would probably plan on two hours. You guys will probably have questions, so that would make it two hours.
So are we just meeting at the sheriff's office?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll send an email with the time, or sorry, time and address, and where to meet, and if you wanna bring your spouses, you're more than welcome to.
Can I bring teenage boys and say, if you don't behave?
You're, you're more, you're more than, you are more than welcome, Dave, that's up to you if you wanna.
Show them the present.
Yeah, the jail, there's the main hallway, we call it Main Street, we'll probably walk up and down that, depends on if the inmates are in bed or not, if we can kinda sneak through an area. Actually, we could probably take it in an area that, um, there's no inmates, but you can see how the housing unit is set up.
Yeah, let's see where home is, yeah.
So yeah, what's planned on seven hours? And with that, the, the jail, um, our enforcement bureau, or the sheriff's office, the main offices, and then we'll look at search and rescue, um, SWAT vehicles and equipment. We'll go and get into the nine-one-one center and just kinda walk on the floor and listen to calls as they come in, and you see how that works. And. And you can see where the Utah County Fire Department. I know you see a lot of their trucks up here and they do a great job of helping with you guys, and you can see that too.
And we could go to ELC.
And we can go to ELC, so, maybe I can get Quinn, or, uh, Quinn.
Or Quinn, yeah, Quinn would be good.
So, okay, we'll make that work, and then.
Thank you.
Unless you have a band concert.
Unless I have a band concert. A cou- a couple of questions on speed limit signs, who's in charge of that?
Craig.
I knew that's why you stayed, I was just looking, uh, Willa Reed, can we get a speed limit sign on that, coming off of eleven-two-hundred?
Coming up the city?
What do you wanna have, fifty?
I would.
It's uphill.
Well, those coming down, it are going about fifty, forty, fifty, they, you just watch them like. I'm like, man, do we have a speed limit sign, so, something there, and then, um.
Is that road thirty-five?
Do we know what the speed?
That's what I, I don't, I didn't see one, so I'm like, I'm curious. So, let's. And then also, speed limits, does that go through city council or does that public works? Setting speed limits, and the reason I bring that up is, coming down Summit Creek, once you're out of the, the gate area, that area is gonna be more populated, you got houses right up against the roadway. And that is a thirty mile an hour speed limit through there, but I'm wondering if that could be dropped to twenty-five. Once you pass it, so it's thirty from.
Just past the gate where it's.
Yeah.
But then, if the Four Seasons, it, there is a twenty-five mile an hour sign there.
It's thirty, it's thirty. Is it twenty-five going up? That was the speed trailer, we set the speed trailer.
Is that all it was?
But we, myself and Craig have talked about putting, see if we can drop that speed to twenty-five through that area, and I don't know if that is a city council thing, or is that just public works?
I might think you have to have a traffic study too.
They would have to do that.
You have to do a traffic study, I think, because you can't just arbitrarily pick out, uh, speed limits.
Yeah, you can, since it's a residential.
For residential, bro.
We did it before.
It is residential, if it's a.
So I, I'm just, I've gotten. I've gotten some residents concerned that Woodland Hills is thirty-five, once you pass the city office, and Summit Creek's thirty, so why the difference?
So it really should be, all residential, maybe it should be twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Because of the clear zones, I mean, they're usually.
Because of the clear zones, I mean, they're usually set by them.
Yeah.
The right-of-way, the lane widths and the right-of-way, they call clear zone, the distance from the edge of the road to the right-of-way line is usually how you determine, at least when we designed those, that's how we look at it.
That's what I was thinking.
But when you come down to residential, because you only have a limited right-of-way residential, and driveways, the driveways and stuff like that, all residential should be twenty-five. That's why you see, like, when you go around the freeway, you see, uh, the edge of the road, and there's way off over there is a fence line, the right-of-way to the fence line. That's, that's that far away because that's their clear zone. If a car leaves the road at eighty miles an hour, you know, it has room to stop before hitting something on someone's property.
And Ted, isn't it that residential's twenty-five, but if it's more of a major corridor, it can be the thirty or thirty-five?
Yeah, that depends on your clear zone, what's on the right of line.
Draper has, up where my kids live, it's twenty. Up on the, the point by Widowmaker, where those hills are, is twenty miles an hour in that whole neighborhood.
I say July.
It might just be something to think about at city council, it's, 'cause that's, I do get people asking as I stop them, uh, is why thirty-five here and thirty on the other side?
Do we need to change the twenty-five?
No.
I agree.
I went to...
So you're saying change Summit Creek to thirty-five?
So I, I mean, we can make that an agenda item, I mean, I, do you wanna make that a more immediate agenda item? I mean, it's not gonna fill that up for a while.
So if you guys get these, you're just gonna fill out, you're gonna, uh, put the dates, put, uh, sorry, you're, print your name, put your phone number, your date, birth, and age.
Oh, my. Because you wanna have a party for us, it's our birthday.
Then I just need you to sign where it says, "Rylon Signature," I'll sign as a witness, and I'll fill out the rest. What makes you qualified, all right?
That'll be posted on Facebook tonight.
It's what?
It'll be posted on Facebook tonight.
All this information?
He really just wants us to have a party on our birthdays.
So, I'll pick those up for me here.
Okay, thanks, Deputy. Okay, um, Corbett, Public Works, any updates?
Uh, we got the tanks in the basement of the wellhouse. We got the grease trap, the oil separator installed for the track though, and probably won't give you more done up to this year.
Were you, full, the tanks filled with diesel yet?
No. No, probably wait till the end of the budget cycle, and then just use whatever money's left over and, and budget anyways for the year.
Great.
Unless, unless fuel prices drop and we wanna pull the plug, pull the trigger.
I don't think they're dropping.
No.
They have a scenery point that way.
There's other places that are dropping, it's just not us.
All right, thanks, Corbett. Uh, Councilmember Hilliard?
Uh, Public Works, uh, our last meeting got canceled, or, yeah, canceled. Um, Parks and Trails, we did meet this past week, um, and we discussed some maintenance. Um, the count, or the, the committee there was wondering if you would be willing to use your, your executive privilege to shut the trail down, so we have bollards and we can pull a chain, um, in the near future to close it off to motorized vehicles for the winter. I know Mayor Frey has done that in the past, typically.
No, we only closed it, um, for a very short period of time for two reasons. One was when we were having the equipment go up for the, uh, geofence and that mitigation, and the second was for when they had the avalanche danger. And it was only, those two were very, very short periods of time, because there are public lands.
Okay.
And so why, what, what's the closure for, I mean, I, I actually...
The, the committee wanted to be able to do the maintenance on the waterbarks again. Um, there's some discussion on whether that'll actually come to fruition or not between, you know, our co-chairs, but they're wanting to know if, if we can do the maintenance and then close it down for the year, but this information says no, so it's a, it's a midpoint, so we'll move forward.
The committee, like you say, we're gonna close it for a few, uh, the, the morning, 'cause we're doing maintenance work, but not a permanent closure.
But some of the committee, I think they want the waterbarks to be pristine all the time.
Oh, they can't, they don't need to be...
And that is not realistic.
That's what they wanted, the waterbarks are to compact them.
When we put the, when we had those put in, we did it to D and R standards, and they said, just generalized maintenance should keep them for twenty years or more. They don't have to be pristine and exact or whatever, because, but I understand.
We have love.
Yes.
Question?
Yes.
Do you want us to continue to pursue the ordinance that you've originated with?
Yeah, has that public hearing been scheduled by chance?
It'll be scheduled November.
Perfect.
And what is that for?
The trails. So the trails ordinance.
To limit the width, or safety.
Oh, yeah, the width, which is a standard, yeah.
It's, it's predominantly with slight alterations, the old trails ordinance, but pulled from subdivision and into residential. So from chapter, what, eleven to ten, so. Um, we're also still working on a few things from a grant and a funding standpoint. I've got a few things to discuss with you concerning that.
Okay.
Um, potential options, um, but for the most part, that's it.
And I, and I did send Janet and the two co-chairs, uh, they're having some grant workshops coming throughout the state, so I sent them that information if they wanted to register to attend, and Sherry said she did. So you might wanna follow up on which one she's going to.
If you sent that to Janet, we're good.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Preston?
Uh, real quick, um, have a scheduled nine, or have a scheduled nine-one-one dispatch visit with our firefighters tomorrow. Uh, remember, I see Suzie, she was very, they're really good down there about scheduling tours. Uh, our firefighters need to know who the voices are on the radios, it helps, uh, put a base to the voice, so they'll be, uh, they'll be visiting dispatch tomorrow, one in with me. Um, you heard about the new truck? I'm glad that they did that visit, 'cause, uh, the engineer pointed out a few things that, that really helped, so those trips are very worthwhile, that that company includes in the, in the purchase price. So that was, that was a great visit those fellows made, that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Watt?
Uh, so, you know, I always have all the events. We have a jump retreat on Monday, and the signs, did we have quite the windstorm or something? 'Cause I was out of town.
Yeah, we did.
All I'm saying is that I was out in a monsoon trying to pull that sign out of the mud.
Yes, the signs are both missing because the wind ripped them apart. They were in, kind of, they were old, been used a few times, signs probably three to four years, and so they're probably on their last leg anyway, so it was like the wind finished them off.
Yeah, this one's a little frayed, but Craig said he...
Just so you guys know, J-Mart has all those files now.
Yeah, now the Zach left.
They can make those, yeah, J-Mart does.
Well, yeah, and I'm used to, like, we'll just make new ones for next year, I think we'll...
I can probably fix that one.
Bring it with you?
I did not, I brought it to church on Sunday.
You did?
Yeah. Put it right next to me on the view, and you didn't zip me off.
You just go to church.
Yeah, I was there.
Yeah, if you were on the opposite side, I don't know what that's all about.
I wasn't on the, the, uh, it was the primary side.
Oh, that's right, primary program, yeah.
Yeah.
Very disruptive.
So, um, so for jump retreat, we have, um, we are lacking in donut donations. That is what we're still lacking in. I do have a donor, it's not hard to guess who it is, who will fill in the gap, but I don't want that donor to take care of all of it.
We did advertise it on Facebook, we have made a sign-up sheet, we also gave it to, um, the relief societies to have ladies sign up through that.
We've only got a couple to sign.
And we've only got a few so far that have signed up, so...
Yes.
How much do you need?
Thirty dozen.
We don't need thirty, we probably need twenty-five.
Twenty-five percent.
Or twenty even, 'cause some of the kids have like four donuts last year.
So money-wise, what does it take to buy that twenty-five?
Hmm, seven hundred.
Yeah, last year, well, we donated eight hundred dollars, but that was hot cocoa and everything, and we have hot cocoa, so we don't want that.
I know.
Seven hundred dollars in business, seven hundred.
I, we could get away, we could get away with less.
Everybody's got candy, all has the place.
Is the, is the city engineers gonna...
City engineers might donate some, let me see how much we got left in our budget spending.
Um, that would be amazing, 'cause we have everything else, that's literally like the last thing. My poor husband and my son are gonna be potty patrol in the church this year. So if anyone wants to volunteer for that, they would be thrilled, but otherwise, they're stuck with that job.
And what's potty patrol? I mean, I get going.
No, the restrooms are open, and they don't want people running the church and doing vandalism.
So they're limiting where they go.
Uh-huh, so you can have monitors, hall monitors, so that people can't go where they're not supposed to. So, um, and then, um, we are going to have, like, a trailer, kind of a haunted trailer scene. Last year was a tent. So Brad is supposed to be doing a haunted trailer, and he has a bunch of animatronics and everything. So there'll be kind of something for the younger kids, and then something a little bit scarier for the older kids, that's...
And my Greek has something, too, that he's gonna...
He texted me while we were just down there, so... Anyway, so it should be really fun at the church Monday nights, six to eight, and it'll be cold.
Yes, no. Great, thank you.
Oh, and finance, we had finance committee a couple weeks ago, so... I don't, there wasn't anything earth-shattering, I don't think, was there? I think all as well. They just talked about leaving the budget.
All right, Councilmember Watt, you can call.
Yes, so, um, communication committee, uh, we have had a lot of issues because our committee is so small that if one person or doesn't, isn't able to complete their assignment, it doesn't get done, and I cannot do everything. And so I am desperately seeking anyone's, um, help on the communication committee, if any of you know people who would be willing to, this is something they just can do from their house. I just give them all of the information, and they have to format it into, into the program that we have purchased as a city. So, um, if anyone knows, if somebody who has a little bit of IT, um, you know, can, at least can work a computer somewhat decently.
Is it, is it IT, or is it just design?
Well, it's, we're just using, um, uh, MailChimp, so it's not even, it's mostly, uh, just plug-and-play, right? You just put it into a specific spot. So I need somebody who knows how to do it, so it doesn't take forever to do it, because we don't send it out without approval first, and so I just need somebody who, who can help us in that. So if anyone knows somebody who would like, yeah, Corbett, you were first on my list. Don't put your nose, but, at that. And then, of course, um...
I would be, too. I'm not gonna book for that.
Community Watch is now being changed to emergency management, and you heard our spill earlier. And then also, um, I'm going to add in the strategic planning, so I can give you regular updates on what we're doing down there. So we can put all three of those there instead of having to have a separate report, I can just get one as I can.
Jody, did you get that?
I already texted it to her.
Okay.
I just think it'd be easier than having to have little reports all around.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Brad?
So Public Works' end of engine got canceled, and fighting commission, we've already had to talk about, so I'll see if I have anything to add there.
Okay, thank you. On personnel, um, probably all of you know Marcy has given her notice, so we're in the market for a deputy reporter. Tell your friends, your qualified friends.
Have you had any good?
Last I heard, we have not had any takers. So, um...
I mean, I might need another job.
Tell your friends, yeah.
One that you pay for.
I heard Corbett's available. He didn't do this.
Yeah, so you definitely need someone.
I'm in the housing department.
Yeah, you, I think that you need to get Jody here resume.
You know, so if anybody knows somebody in the city who's looking for a part-time job, you know, that nine to three in the day, but you're down.
Yeah. It's an opportunity, yeah. And, uh, it's, uh, I think, an increasingly competitive, uh, market for employees.
And nobody from in the valley wants to drive up here.
It's gotta be somebody close, stay low.
Um, other than that, uh, we're working on some cross-training so that people can take their vacation, um, and, uh...
Even Corbett?
Well, if, if he's willing to take a vacation.
Hey, I took vacation last week, by the time variety rolled around, I couldn't use it.
Well, we're working on it, so, but, uh, we feel that that, I, I believe that that will at least give more opportunities to allow people to have a, a system in place that they can, 'cause that...
At least they'll, like, they can take off. I, I brought this up to a legislator not too long ago, who was talking about cities who don't do things in timely manners, blah, blah, blah. I said, "So, when you're a small city and you have one person who can do grandma, and one person who can do site plans, and one person who can only do this or that, when are they supposed to ever take a day off? Because state statute says they have to do this in so many days, and if the, if it comes in and they're not here and their vacation is a whole week, that gives them two days or so to get it done." And it's really, really difficult, and it made them kinda go, "What?", you know? So I think that we just need to, um, be able to allow for our, our employees not to feel guilty that they've taken it off, and yet at the same time, that cross-training, so those, those state statutes that have time limits on them can actually be done.
Yeah, no, I agree, and it's, it's an affordable way to do it, too, hiring a bunch more. That would be great, but we just don't have the money for it.
I have one miscellaneous I forgot about. Just to give you something.
A possible item for an upcoming city council?
No, it's just something exciting that I think we'll be excited about. I ran into Kenny Seng today at a meeting I was in, and I don't know, he's a contractor, and he's done work here in the city. He helped us with some of our post-fire mitigation efforts, the channel work, it was his team. They received the contract to do the Salem Parkway, that is the new road that goes from Elk Ridge out to the freeway, and they're starting it in two weeks.
Oh, no kidding?
I thought we would be excited about that.
More detours in the night.
Yeah, more detours. Maybe this detour will...
Well, I'm glad I'm empty, kinda guy.
But at least we can have some vision that we can maybe get out to the freeway faster than a half an hour that it's now taking us to go through Spanish.
Yeah, no, that's great, how, what was the projected, uh, completion?
He just, I just asked him start date, 'cause that's what I was worried about, but you probably talked about it at Mac.
Uh, yeah, well, it's, it's canceled this month, so, but he's on the SES people, that's why I visited Kenny pretty recently. Okay, uh, any other items, wrap any meetings? You took a breath.
No, I were, I thought you were saying you can have a break.
Oh, yeah, I am, because, uh, I had a waiting for a break. I thought we were gonna be at nine, uh, nine AM.
Nine AM?
Yeah, I hope you're gonna see some of the work. Jody, will we lie? All right, this is Councilmember Malkovich, has served...
Has served the donuts.
...all participants. I will see if she would be willing to lead us in the pledge, followed by invitation by Anna and Kristen.
Yes, all runners? Keep with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful this evening to meet as a city council, and we are grateful for those in attendance, those that are here to help us make this a good city and to run things smoothly. We ask Thy inspiration in making wise decisions and in doing those things that are necessary to, to run a smooth city in a place that we love. We ask blessings to be upon our mayor and those in our city that need anything special at this time. We're thankful for the opportunity we have to work together and to enjoy each other's company, we are blessed. We say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Okay, public comment portion, uh, I, I know that there's one person here, just aching to make a comment, so we will open the public comment portion, and please, Aaron, have at it.
Okay, um, my comment is, I'd like to give you some food for thought, literally, regarding the subject of the roosters, um, I understand that they can be a noise nuisance, but also, we should also take into consideration that in an emergency situation, if we ever had to be able to reproduce our own food supply here in our city, we would have to say goodbye to all the chicken solutions, which is one of the best food sources that we could ever have, uh, live, uh, live food solution, so, just food for thought, um, I hate the sound of roosters growing too, and, but I also think about the fact that peace of mind, knowing that I could actually feed my family if there's a long-term food supply problem, I could do so with the roosters, I would need the roosters.
Yeah, but we could put on a nice loafer.
I'd only need one rooster. I could go either way, because I also have rabbits, and rabbits are actually pretty good too, and they'll be giving me ice, and they taste like chicken.
Thank you. All right, anybody else have any commentary? And I think that's it, okay, so we can close the public comment portion, and move on to at least those items in the consent agenda, item twenty-one, city council meeting minutes, October eleventh, twenty twenty-two.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
A motion to approve by council member Hilliard. Second by council member Pratt, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, financials, we will come back to when Chris is in attendance, item twenty-four, retracting the community watch committee policy and procedure.
I'll so moved that we, we, um, retract that, uh, committee policy and procedure.
Okay, uh, motion by council member Malkovich.
I'll second it.
Seconded by council member Lund, council member Lund.
Yes.
Council member Kinnison.
Yes.
Council member Pratt.
Yes.
Council member Hilliard.
Yes.
Council member Malkovich.
Yes.
Motion carried, uh, resolution twenty-two-two-nine, support for the growth and prosperity compact in Utah Valley, as discussed in our last meeting.
So moved.
A motion by council member Malkovich.
I'll second it.
Seconded by council member Lund, all in favor?
Can we have just a bit of discussion?
I printed from our page.
Of course, the idea was to do discussion last time, and I guess you guys did read it, so, so probably.
Yeah, so, I, I just wanted to say thank you to, uh, council member Malkovich for giving us a chance to read this, um, I, I read the entire thing, here's the hard part, I don't think anybody is really ecstatic over growth, I mean, it does mean jobs, so that's a good thing, but it's hard, we, we, we kind of moved here because we like what it looks like and everything, having said that, the one thing I did really appreciate about what they're doing here, there were, there were a couple things, um, the first was, I really thought this was, this paragraph, it's called out in blue, but it says, this vision aims to be a resource for local government, business, and residents to use when making decisions that impact their communities, this vision is not mandatory, nor should it be applied across Utah County in the same way, and I think that was the part that at least made me feel a little more comfortable with what's going on here.
Yeah.
Because it's, it, it's more of a, this is a vision, this is how we could, now, it is up to us then to take that, and to decide, okay, how does that apply to Woodland Hills, or how does that apply to our sister cities of Salem and Elk Ridge, and how do we work together with them, and so I think, I think that's a fair comment, and a fair thing, again, there's a lot of different ways you could handle growth, um, the way that this proposes is probably the most reasonable out of those, so I, I just really appreciated that, the one warning I'm going to give is, when I looked at those that were on the steering committee, the one thing that I noticed was, out of all the mayors, there's not a small-town mayor, and that kind of concerns me a little bit.
There is now, there wasn't at the time, when that first came out, that was pre-COVID, but there are some now.
Okay, this.
And they also have been working through MAC, so our mayor did have the opportunity, when he did, to discuss it with MAC, and I don't know if, since you've been mayor, they, I think they had one or two discussions about value visioning, but, um, you don't meet that often.
No, now it's, uh, council one.
So I think, I think that's my biggest concern, is, you know, just, our, our, you know, our city is very different from any, any of the bigger cities, any of the ones that are represented here, I mean, Provo, Orem, Lehigh, I mean, Spanish Fork, we're, we're not even, our problems are not their problems, and their problems are not our problems, and so, I think it's important that we continue to really strive to have that voice, um, because it may, we may not get much of a voice with this.
And just to let you know, that's, that one statement about this is not mandatory, that was really important to me, and how we, um, structured the, the grant that we got, and we use these, these six pillars to say, these are issues that need to be discussed, but we are coming to our residents to say, not, not to say, this is what's happening, but to say, okay, where do we see the vision for Woodland Hills, as we see the vision for the county's going to come around us, we are not a high-growth area, um, Vineyard is the number-one growth city in the entire nation, they went from like a hundred and fifty people to sixty thousand in just a few couple years.
Awful.
All under one mayor's term, right, and so, um, so there are some high-growth areas, but that point, uh, that you're making about having individual choice, and it's important to us that we maintain quality of life, but we do know that growth is coming, they say that eighty percent of that growth is internal growth, meaning our kids and our grandkids who want to still live in Utah County, now, I would rather be able to drive to see my friend kids than have to fly because they've moved to another state, um, but it is a little bit of a heartache on where's the growth happening, I drive through Salem, and I, sometimes it just makes me go, huh, right, because it's already changed so much, even in the last five years, and we have opportunities for growth because we value, uh, private property rights, but we want to make sure we're growing in a way that is beneficial to our city, that is, maintains our quality of life, and that we can, um, you know, we really can see what the vision of our city is, and that's why the strategic plan is to get to that point, to where we are making decisions based on real data, and not just emotion.
Collaborative.
All right, well, with that, so we already had a motion and a second, right?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Aren't any of you going to the growth and prosperity conference on Thursday, did any of you sign up to go?
Done.
Okay, just wanted to check.
All right.
Not Thursday.
Uh, item twenty-six, resolution twenty-two-two-thirty, approving August twenty-two, check disbursements, okay, so the check disbursements, I.
We didn't really talk about those, so do we want a table?
I think we should, and I, I would like that, Chris, if we made that decision, okay, so, twenty-eight, uh, ordinance twenty-two-two-three-one, amend the city code five-six-A and six-B, those flying male goats or roosters will be permitted.
I would like to make motion to approve that, and I respect your comments, I'm planning on using the turkeys for that.
Turkeys are actually louder.
I get that, but I, but they're wild.
They have, they're bunged, and they're wild.
We have quail, we have turkeys, and we have deer.
Oh, you're talking about the wild turkeys.
I'll second the motion if I can get a comment.
Nice tough meat.
I want Wayne to hear my commentary, I do have a hen that crows, so, don't, uh, she's got a problem.
We're seeing to have that same issue throughout the country.
All right.
All right, well, before we go there.
What's that hen's drawdown?
That's a, uh, motion by council member Pratt, and a second by council member Kinnison.
I think that if we get to a point where we're in a, a place where we're needing to raise our own food, you know, per whatever disaster.
Emergency declaration.
We'll have an emergency declaration and rescind this. I, I think it'll be all hands on deck, and we'll be collaborating.
Really bigger problems to worry about.
Than probably roosters.
Yeah, go ahead and get a rooster, uh.
Inasmuch, inasmuch as I know where Aaron's coop sits in proximity to my home, which is about twenty feet away, I love it.
All right, well, so we have a motion and a second, council member Malkovich.
Yes.
Council member Hilliard.
Yes.
Council member Pratt.
Yes.
Council member Kinnison.
Yes.
Council member Lund.
Yes.
Motion carried, item twenty-nine, ordinance twenty-two-two-three-two, amending ten, four, five-E, requiring drawings and information.
Uh, some of them.
Okay, a motion by council member Malkovich, seconded by council member Pratt, council member Lund.
Yes.
Council member Kinnison.
Yes.
Council member Pratt.
Yes.
Council member Hilliard.
Yes.
Council member Malkovich.
Yes.
Motion carried, uh, item thirty, agreement, the twenty-two-two dash four EMS contract.
That's what she presented last month.
I, I move that we do that.
Okay, a motion by council member Kinnison, seconded by council member Hilliard, council member Malkovich.
Yes.
Council member Hilliard.
Yes.
Council member Pratt.
Yes.
Council member Kinnison.
Yes.
Council member Lund.
Yes.
Motion carried, uh.
Striking thirty-one.
Yeah, thirty-one, we are not adopting a grant management policy, um, thirty-two, approval of sewer impact B study, I dare someone to vote against this.
I move that we approve that.
That's terrible, David.
And a disgusting.
I'll second that.
Seconded by council member Hilliard. Council member Lund.
Yes.
Council member Kinnison.
Yes.
Council member Pratt.
Yes.
Council member Hilliard.
Yes.
Council member Malkovich.
Yes, be careful you're going to get a name.
All right, motion carried.
Mayor?
Yeah.
We also need to follow, follow up with Chris to fund that.
Yes, we do, okay, and thank you for mentioning that, um, all right, item thirty-three, uh, approval of increase in contract price type three and type one fire truck.
I move to approve that.
Now, before we do that, Craig did, uh, he mentioned to me, so, we, we can make this a very specific, uh, approval of those up charges, or if you want to amend the, because we don't have a four-hundred-seventy-thousand-dollar formal approval for the truck price, so we can go either direction, but.
I think we should approve it at four-hundred-seventy.
Up two, is what we decided.
Right, right, I'd second that.
Okay, so, Jody, uh, can you, uh?
Do you like, I like the amount in there, don't you, Craig?
If you could, if you could put together something memorializing that.
A two but not exceeding.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Two but not exceed.
So, uh, that's a motion by council member Kinnison, and a second by council member Hilliard, council member Malkovich.
Yes.
Council member Hilliard.
Yes.
Council member Pratt.
Yes.
Council member Kinnison.
Yes.
Council member Lund.
Yes, but it's our understanding if it ends up being more, he'll come back again.
Well, yeah, I, 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 I don't think.
Blackout is.
Yeah, I, I, you mean like if it exceeds four-seventy, yeah, I mean, I, I think that we would have to make it a change.
I just want to make sure.
But I just want to formalize, so that if, if, if there's something else that does come back, then we don't need to necessarily come back and council approve it every time, so.
But just if it goes over.
Yeah, okay, uh, then.
Do we need a special?
Well, we don't have, oh, I mean, there's kind of an update.
Okay, a quick one?
Yeah.
Move to a special session.
Okay, a motion to, and.
Mary and I will talk.
Second by council member Malkovich, seconded by council member Hilliard.
Special session.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're in a closed session, thanks for being here.
Saturday morning, I'll be back, I'll be.
If you would do that, that would be great.
Okay.
But next, and just so you know, next month, this man will approve the.
It'll at least be on the agenda.
Motion by.
I'll make a motion.
By council member Hilliard, seconded by council member Pratt, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, meeting adjourned.